Eighteen years in the Coast Guard and is a Korean War veteran. He's also active with the Legion Post 335. If they could present the colors and Norm will lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Gentlemen? Come on now.
Yes. Just give that to... Let's just make a little room for Norm here.
I will prepare to salute the flag of the United States. Right-hand salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
That's it? Hey, thank you so much. It's a treat for us. One of them stays here, so I think that one's... Yep. Thank you, Norm. Thank you, Troop 80. Well done. I'd like to take a moment of silence for those that we've lost since last annual town meeting. Unfortunately, the list is far too long, if you bear with me. We lost a number of people who served this town in many different ways. This year, we lost Charlotte Gallagher, who was a fire department clerk from 1981 to 1982, and a special police officer in 1981. We lost Charles Groff, a War Memorial Study Committee member from 1973, and he served on the Council on Aging from 2001 to 2008. Richard Boomer, Board of Appeals from 1976 to 1979, Sewer Study Committee in 1976. John Jack McFeely, who's on the... There's a long list here. Water Study Committee, 1976. Bicentennial Committee, 1976. Advisory Committee, 1979 to 81. Police Commissioner, 82 to 83. Registrar, 94 to 97. Cable Advisory Committee, 97 to 98. Board of Selectmen, 99 to 2004. Police Commissioner, 1999 to 2004. Registrar again, 2012 to 2013. Norfolk County Advisory Board, 2013 to 2015. Alan Waszkiewicz, Police Officer, 1979 to 2001. George T. Cronin, Sr., KP School Committee, 70 to 71. Volunteer Support Manager Baseball, 70 and 71. Garage Building Maintenance Study, 1974. Moderator from 76 to 77. Library Building Study Committee, 1980. Zoning Bylaw Study Committee, 81. Fire Chief Study Committee, 1981. James H. Foley, Superintendent of Streets, 1970. Medical Care and Life Insurance Advisory Committee, 1970. Fire Engineer, 70 to 73. Special Police Officer, 70 to 80. Civil Defense Engineering Officer, 1970. Inspector of Animals, 71 to 75. Deputy Fire Chief, 1974. Acting Fire Chief, 79. Interim Fire Chief, 1981. If we could all have a moment of silence for those that we've lost. Thank you. I'd like to introduce a few of the players for tonight. To my left is Carol Green, the Town Clerk. To my further left is the Board of Selectmen, Jack Hathaway, the Town Administrator, and David Dineski, Town Counsel. And Mr. Benton, could you introduce the Advisory Committee for us?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. All right. Is it on? Yes? No? All right. We have, starting on the left, Jonathan Hurwitz, Arlie Sterling, Pat Snead, Rick Stillman, our able administrator, Sue Jacobson, and Arthur Franzak.
Thank you. So, a few ground rules for town meeting. You'll notice that in the warrant this year, we did include a little bit of a guide in terms of some of the ways to make motions. We also had a glossary of terms available out on the table to help people wade through all of the terminology that we throw around here. Our town meeting is governed by a book called Town Meeting Time, which is a parliamentary procedure book, and local bylaws and state law. I'll explain procedures as needed, and I will request any person who stands with a point of order that needs clarification on the procedures. Motions are generally made by the Advisory Committee, except for petition articles, for which the petitioners themselves will be making the motions. We have two of those later in the evening. We also, in addition to motions to approve articles, we have something called a motion for indefinite postponement. If you hear that, that just means that someone is essentially tabling a motion, and we won't be considering it any further at this town meeting. All motions and motions to amend generally must be in writing, provided that for small clerical and typographical corrections, I will accept friendly amendments. If you do want to make a motion to amend, we're going to ask after you make it that it be reduced to writing, and Carol and I can help you with that. We no longer have red and green microphones, but I will try and balance the discussion as much as I can. Everyone has a chance to speak on a matter, but at a certain point, I will try and avoid repetition and try and get to the point at issue. I may allow someone with new info to speak a third time, but by bylaw, I may limit a speaker to two times. Similarly, I may limit someone to five minutes the first time they're at the mic and three minutes the second time, although, for good reasons, I will allow people to exceed that. All comments and questions must be made through the moderator. You can come up to a mic and speak your piece on any particular matter. We've got two mics here, and the Selectmen and Advisory Committee have mics as well. No personal comments at all, and all comments must be civil and respectful. We have many local officials here present, and between myself and those local officials, we will try and get any questions you have answered. We don't use cards to hold your hand up. I will try and take voice votes. Where that fails, I may ask you to raise your hand. Where that fails, we may have you stand and be counted. For that purpose, I have named a few tellers: George Cronin, Dave Lutz, and Paul Terrio. If we need to, we will count those votes. I do respect a call of the question or a motion to cut off debate if you think that it has gone on too far. However, if I think it's premature, I will not recognize it. But if someone feels that it's gone on too far, I will take those motions, and we can debate them. There's a lot of business to be conducted tonight, but I've taken a look at the warrant, and I'm confident that we can do this in one night. It's my job to make sure that everyone gets fair debate, but it's also my job to make sure that we get the most amount of work done in the least amount of time. So that is a goal we have here. We have another distinguished guest here tonight, our local state representative, Sean Dooley, who has asked if he could have a few minutes at a microphone to give us an update on what he's been up to. Mr. Dooley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And thank you very much for having me, and thank you for giving me the privilege of speaking tonight. I just wanted to thank everyone for re-electing me and letting me continue to serve you in the House. We're very, very busy. We're plugging away on the budget right now. We just, just to give a quick update on the budget, we were able to increase the local aid number for this coming up year, so we're getting more money back to the town of Norfolk. In addition, we were able to increase school funding by $25 per pupil, and we're able to increase the amount of, for special ed, the circuit breakers. We're able to bring that back almost to fully funded. This is through the House budget. The Senate budget starts their debate next week, so that remains to be seen. One of my... I was able to get two amendments in. The first was prison mitigation. We were able to get $2.2 million for prison mitigation. That roughly translates to $300,000, $350,000 for Norfolk, provided that it goes all the way through the Senate and then through the governor signing it. And furthermore, we were able to get $100,000 earmarked for the King Philip Turf Field. So that will hopefully be... Senator Ross will be able to hopefully get that through on the Senate side as well. And I've spoken to the governor about that, provided that there's no, you know, ongoing emergencies. We'll hopefully get that funded. I did want to address one issue that I'm currently fighting and battling is, we found out on Monday for sure, that Bay State Prison will be closed. Well, it's technically going to be mothballed. All the prisoners will be out of there as of June 30th. The Department of Corrections is trying to reduce their budget, but one of the things they're looking to reduce their budget for is repurposing Pondville and making that more of a probation facility. So the prisoners will be there locked in at night, but during the day, they will be out on work release on different areas. I personally am not in favor of this. I want to... The Secretary of Public Safety is coming down, meeting with myself and Mr. Hathaway and a few of the Selectmen next week, soon as we're able to firm up a time, because I want to make sure that we have a lot of assurances. I want to make sure that these people are, you know, there are not any sex offenders. They're not going to be able to be, you know, outside of the prison walls unaccompanied. I want to make sure they're also, in addition to the security, whenever they're outside of the prisons, be on an ankle bracelet. And I want to make sure that we have assurances in place for financial security, that additional policing that we're going to have to deal with, and additional ambulances by the increase of this, that all this is taken care of, and Norfolk does not continue to bear the brunt that we've had to bear in the past by hosting these four prisons. So that's going to be an ongoing battle. I will try to keep everyone apprised as much as I can through the press. I know you have a very busy night tonight, and I wanted to thank the moderator for letting me speak. If anyone has any questions, I'll be here all night, and feel free to come up. And as always, if you ever need anything, that's what I'm here for. I'm your representative, you know, on a state or even a federal level. I work with Congressman Kennedy very well. We work... We talk two or three times a week. So if you have a federal issue, I'm happy to introduce you to him and get it... Make sure his staff's handling it. But if you have anything local, feel free to give my office a call. We can set up a meeting either in Boston or in Norfolk. So whatever you need, I'm here for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Representative Dooley. I'd also be remiss if I didn't thank the King Philip students who are providing daycare services tonight. I think it's really helpful to get parents out to town meeting, and I hope we can continue that in the future. It's a great feature. Article I does not require any action. It just relates to the election, so we'll go right to Article II. Mr. Benton?
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the Finance Director to pay a prior-year bill in the amount of $750 to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $750 be transferred from free cash. So this article, you may have noticed, was, we originally were planning on IP-ing it. A very late bill from the state, in fact, it's over a year old, came in, so $750 there. They're telling us we have to pay it, so...
Any discussion on Article II? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Article III. Mr. Benton?
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve the transfers as displayed on the screen and provided in the handout.
Mr. Benton?
There we go.
Nope?
Yeah. Yep. So, one small change relative to the handout. There was one late transfer here, which I'll get to in a minute, so...
Can we get a little volume on his microphone, or... Not sure if everyone can hear.
Okay. Everybody here okay? Yeah? All right. All right, so transfers... Ooh, now we've got volume. So the transfers primarily, if you... Jack, do you want to flip that? Yeah. If you look at the detail here, it's primarily funding our snow and ice deficit. As you can imagine, after this past winter, we ended up a little short on snow and ice. Jack will have a little further detail on the snow and ice when we get to the detail budget. He has a slide on it. But, so if you notice, the very last line, snow and ice, $246,692, that's the amount that we're effectively transferring from the various sources that you see listed on the left to cover our shortfall. This will leave us with about, after an expected FEMA reimbursement, we still will have about $137,000 deficit in the snow and ice account. That's the one account the state lets you overspend due to the uncertainty. And because of the severity of this year's winter, typically, you need to fix your deficit in the next year's budget, or through transfers or free cash, but they've provided for cities and towns to actually make up this deficit over a three-year period. So, once we close out fiscal '15 and see where we stand with free cash, you know, either in the fall or next spring, we'll be working to remove down the remaining $137,000.
Any questions or discussion?
Sorry. Our late addition. So the late addition, this is within the retained earnings of the Water Division, and this is to do some exploration for a new well. We're desperately in need of finding a new well at some point in the next few years. And this amount of $108,500 is coming from the retained earnings of the Water Division. The Water Division is fully funded by the ratepayers. The Water Division builds up reserves via its retained earnings so that it has funds to do exploration for new wells or make significant capital improvements, et cetera. So that's what the second transfer is for.
Okay. Any questions or discussion on Article III? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. It is unanimous. Article II, by the way, was unanimous as well. Article number four. Mr. Benton?
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the town in Norfolk Personnel Bylaws. ...the compensation schedule by applying a federal increase of 1.5% to all steps on compensation schedule effective July 1, 2015.
Mr. Benton?
This article is to amend our compensation schedule. There's actually very few employees within the amount it applies to. Most of our employees are covered by union contracts or via individual contracts. And the amount of 1.5% is consistent with what's in various union contracts and so forth.
Any discussion or questions on this article? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Article V is the budget. Let me just tell you how we're going to do this. There's going to be a motion from Mr. Benton. Then there's going to be three presentations: Mr. Hathaway, Norfolk Schools, and King Philip Schools. And then what we're going to do is, we're going to read line items generally in the budget, and I'll be asking people to hold them if they want to discuss them. If they don't want to discuss them, then they'll stand as is, and then we'll take a final vote at the end of any discussion. If there's a reason that we have to pull a number out, we may take separate votes, but let's see how we can get through it. Mr. Benton?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town fix the salary and compensation of the elected position of Town Clerk at $65,437, as provided for by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, for the fiscal year commencing on July 1, 2015, and further to raise and appropriate $36,475,707 to defray the departmental and incidental expenses of the town not otherwise provided for, for the fiscal year commencing on July 1, 2015.
Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. I'll do my typical presentation. It's relatively short. I encourage anybody that has a real strong desire to learn more about the budget to join us with, in Selectmen meetings and with the Advisory Committee over the spring process. We start in December and go all the way up through the last couple of weeks before town meeting and really get into the details. So if you're a budget hawk and really want to get into the details, we'll certainly answer your questions tonight. But I encourage you to get through and look at the line items with us as the department heads make presentations at those other meetings. So as I said, I will be brief, but try to answer your questions for you. Revenue for the town is broken up into really four primary functions. It's our tax base, which is our real estate taxes and personal property taxes for the businesses. We go from $24.7 million up to $26 million from year over year. That's allowed under Proposition 2 and 1/2, as well as we have new growth there, so that's additions to your homes, new construction, whether they be commercial or residential. Local receipts is all of the local revenues that we collect, primarily at Town Hall. Also, motor vehicle excise taxes is in that number. That's getting close to $2 million of that piece, but other things in there are building permits, fees that you pay at different departments. State aid, we'll talk about in a minute, but as Representative Dooley spoke about, it's up. It's not up a lot, but it's about $20,000 more than we did last year. And then available sources is money that we take from special revenue accounts or from our free cash, which we'll talk about more in a moment. And you can see we're increasing that significantly this year to try and get the budget to work. State aid, and this is the House budget. I did see a late email. I think the Senate has released some estimates that look like they're in line with this, other than a few hundred dollars here and there. But school aid, as Representative Dooley said, is up $25 per student, gives us a little bit more money. And this is school aid for the public school. King Philip gets... It's called Chapter 70 money. They get Chapter 70 money directly into their budget, but this is money that comes into Norfolk, and then we appropriate it as part of their budget into the school budget. Charter school funding, depending on where charter school attendees are, that is money that we have both a positive and a negative for. Lottery funds used to be, well, that's the old name, actually, lottery. Now it's called unrestricted aid, and that's money that is primarily from the lottery that the state provides to towns. Would love to see my friends at the State House increase that, but we'll see that in the future. Exemptions is money that the assessors have given as exemptions to veterans or disabled, sometimes elderly, for their residential taxes. Sometimes they are getting deferrals in that, and then we get that money back when they sell the house. In other cases, such as this, the state is actually funding us, so we give them a break on their real estate taxes, and then the state reimburses us on a year lag. State land is pilot money, so payment in lieu of taxes. That's all the land that the state owns in town. I've... We have a new chief assessor who I've asked to look at that and really kind of work with the state as they go through their process every three years to look at the value of land. We saw this. This number was well over $200,000 five years ago. Unfortunately, the state sets their rate for land values, and that dropped six or seven years ago, I guess now. But that's the money they pay for us. It's instead of us being able to raise taxes for particularly the prison land, they pay us money to reimburse us, quote unquote. And then the assessments are primarily county taxes. Those are things that go to Norfolk County Registry and run the court systems. Those are assessments that the state charges us, so it's on the cherry sheets. That's our local aid sheets that come in, and you can see that that number unfortunately went up. So the gross, the net impact, I should say, on our state aid is really an increase of Snow and ice, we talked about. You know, it was, it was obviously, as you all know, a brutal winter in terms of snow and ice, not only the accumulation, but the constant cold. We never got any freezing during the year, so the snow just kept building and building. We ended up putting March snow on top of January snow. But we had an appropriation of $175,000. We spent $658,000. We expect somewhere between $75,000 to $100,000 from FEMA as a reimbursement. So after that estimated reimbursement, we still think we'll have $383,000 deficit, but we're going to try and close some of that. Actually, we did close some of that in the transfer article, so I'll update that number in a minute. Free cash, just very briefly, we have $1.1 million that we certified last year. A good amount of that was because we had two years of prison mitigation money that came in. Prison mitigation was delayed two years ago, came in after year-end, so we actually had two years rolled up into fiscal year '14, so $453,000. And then we had $655,000. That's money that either we exceeded our revenues, our revenues came in higher than estimated, or budgets, a lot of the, you know, obviously, we can't, as someone said earlier, we can't legally overspend our budgets, but a lot of the department heads do a great job, and the schools included, of turning back money at the end of the year, and that's what generates our free cash. So we've spent a little bit of that money in the fall from our capital side of that free cash number. We've spent $50,000 in the fall from what I call the traditional free cash side. We spent $216,000. That went to a number of projects, again, at the special town meeting. So at the end of the day, we've got $842,000. I'm sorry to say, that $842,000 is going to disappear today. We're going to spend $456,000 of it to support the FY '16 budget. We already, we're hopefully going to spend $288,900 for capital, which we will lay out in Articles 8, I believe it is. And then the transfer to snow and ice, we did $97,141. The snow and ice deficit, we talked about, obviously, and so at the end of today, we'll still have $136,000 deficit. As Mr. Benton said, we will try and close that. We, well, normally, we would have to close that before we set our tax rate next December, but we have the ability to amortize that over three years. I suspect that we'll make every effort that we can to try and close that at the Fall Town Meeting. You know, next year's going to snow, too, so I don't want to start carrying a couple of years at a time. We did put another $25,000 in the budget, the Selectmen, three years ago. You know, we had $123,000 as the budget for, you know, since I was in high school, and they, three years ago, decided to put $25,000 more into the budget until we get it up to a reasonable number. I'm not sure when that will be, but it is another $25,000 higher this year. The stabilization fund, which we are not proposing touching at all tonight, is at $1.1 million. That is a kind of our savings account, if you will. All the other money we talk about is in our checking account. This takes, I think it's a seven-eighths vote, to get that money out. We would like to have it build up for, and that's what gives us a good bond rating. When we go out to borrow money, the rating agencies look at us and say that that is a reasonable number compared to our budget, and so we have a... We're going to spend $456,000 of it to support the FY16 budget. We already, we're hopefully going to spend $288,900 for capital, which we will lay out in Articles 8, I believe it is. And then the transfer to snow and ice, we did $97,141. The snow and ice deficit, we talked about, obviously, and so at the end of today, we'll still have a $136,000 deficit. As Mr. Benton said, we will try and close that. We, well, normally, we would have to close that before we set our tax rate next December, but we have the ability to amortize that over three years. I suspect that we'll make every effort that we can to try and close that at the Fall Town Meeting. You know, next year's going to snow too, so I don't want to start carrying a couple of years at a time. We did, we did put another $25,000 in the budget, the selectmen, three years ago. You know, we had $123,000 as the budget for, you know, since I was in high school. And they, three years ago, decided to put $25,000 more into the budget until we get it up to a reasonable number. I'm not sure when that will be, but it is another $25,000 higher this year. The stabilization fund, which we are not proposing touching at all tonight, is at $1.1 million. That is a kind of our savings account, if you will. All the other money we talk about is in our checking account. This takes, I think it's a seven-eighths vote, to get that money out. We would like to have it build up for, and that's what gives us a good bond rating. When we go out to borrow money, the rating agencies look at us and say that that is a reasonable number compared to our budget. And so we have a great bond rating, and we get very low interest rates on our borrowing. Oops. I won't go through all these numbers, but these are just, in terms of magnitude, shows you where the, where our budget is. Elementary school is at $10.8 million. King Philip, obviously, that's just the Norfolk portion. You have the Norfolk portion, the Plainville portion, the Rentham portion, and then the Chapter 70 money. But our portion is $10.8 million for the elementary school, $7.7 million for King Philip. Police Department is at $2.3 million now. We have, we're not adding anybody in the police department, but we, we have Chief Stone in the back. But one of the things that we talk about a lot these days with the selectmen is just the retirement schedule is coming up. We have one retiree this summer, and I know we have four or five other retirees over the next three, three years. So we've been trying to build up our reserve force in our, you know, our special, our reserve officers. Those are the, that's going to be now the future Norfolk police officers, assuming that they do well. But that's the pool of talent that we're going to try and draw from in the future. So we built that up a couple of years ago, and the chief puts them on to details and to empty shifts when somebody takes a vacation, et cetera, so that we can see how they do. And, you know, we're hoping to save, save some money with some retirements, but there's always some costs that come with that as well. Health insurance has now become our fourth largest department. We're at $2.1 million. That's a 10.86 percent increase. There is a handout with, on the back of the transfers that shows you the, all the employee benefits that are part of the budget. But health insurance is obviously a major part of that. And county retirement is right below that. So that's $1.6 million. My hope is that over the next, well, the county has told us the next three years are going to be tough. They're, we're going to see increases of similar to this number. But as, as we progress forward, we're having more and more employees who are under the old retirement plans, where they contribute 5% of their salary towards their retirement. The new, the new guys like me, we contribute 9%, and then an additional 2% for everything over $30,000. So I'm hoping that some of the seasoned employees, I waved to Chuck when I say that, the seasoned employees, as they retire off, that will become more funded by the employees. Just to round it up, fire an ambulance, $1.5 million. DPW operations and municipal finance is on there. That's kind of the biggest, that's our biggest budget at Town Hall. That includes the accounting office, the treasurer's office, and the assessor's office. I will just point out that the accounting office has a little blip in funding this year because we have two retirements. Our town accountant and our assistant town accountant are both retiring in the middle of this coming winter. So we're hoping to have a transition period where we can hire a new town accountant late in the fall, so we have a month or two overlap of, before we get, before we lose all that knowledge. Same departments just shows you, instead of by percentage, just shows you the dollar impact, the change in their budgets. So, one, two, three, four, those, those eight departments, if my math is right, make up a change of $1.6 million in the budget. Overall, our entire budget changes by $1.7 million. So really, our money is focused in those, those eight, eight areas. Whoops. Very briefly, just some unknown things. We're still, we still need to go through the FEMA process. It's not, not a lot of fun to go through with FEMA. As you probably saw in the press, we had Governor Baker trying very hard to get those four big storms approved as one big event, and then we would get 75% reimbursement of that, because I know there are a couple DPW employees scattered around here. We know that from January 27th, for a good month, they were working almost every night, day and night, and we saw all those Sunday storms. It never really stopped. By the time we finished getting snow, or even before we finished getting snow out of the way, the next storm was coming. Unfortunately, the federal government didn't see it the same way, so they're treating, they're only giving us a 48-hour window, so we have to find our most expensive 48-hour window, and that's the reimbursement that we'll be able to apply for, and then get 75% of that money back from FEMA. So we're hoping, again, that is somewhere in the 75 to $100,000 range after we finish all that processing. One quirky thing in our budget this year is the, is the elementary school has, expects to turn back $150,000 in their budget in 2015. As we were constructing the 2016 budget, we really wanted to try and transfer that money to pay for our health insurance for next year and do some of the things, especially in the elementary school, that we wanted to be able to do with the full-day kindergarten and the, and the transportation. So one way that, we can't do that. We can't transfer, we can't legally transfer from one fiscal year to the next fiscal year. So what we are proposing doing is, is the school has committed to turning back, or attempting to turn back that $150,000, and then we will, at the Fall Town Meeting, come forward to you and take that out of free cash and fund our health insurance going forward. Talked about the police department and how, and the town accountant's office, how we have some turnover going there. So that'll be a challenge for next year. Our regional communications, that's our Metacomit Emergency Communications Center, is still going forward. They've kind of been on hold for a while, while Norfolk gets our architect on board for our new police, our proposed police station down on Sharon Ave. We look like we've selected an architect just the last couple of days. Chairman Cronin will talk about that in a little while, but that'll be certainly, a lot of my attention next year is getting those two projects, the, the regional communication center and the police and fire facilities up and running over the next year. And we will talk more about that in the fall. We're not coming in to talk about funding or any of those proposals, but we will talk about that in the fall. And then just managing new growth. We have a lot of projects, residential projects, a few commercial projects coming before the different land use boards. Obviously, it's a challenge for us to manage those projects, to look at the infrastructure, particularly water. We need to prepare for those developments. We end up getting funding and new tax revenue after they're built, but sometimes we need to, we need to get infrastructure and other services in place before that funding comes in. But that's, we're talking some significant developments that Mr. Chairman Lehman, Lehman will talk about in the committee reports, but there's a lot of exciting things going on. So that's my presentation. I know I'll probably be answering a few questions in a little while, but I'll turn it back to Mr. Callman.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Do we have someone here from Norfolk Schools?
Good evening. I'm Ingrid Allardy, the superintendent of the Norfolk Elementary Schools, and this is Paul Cochran, the chair of the Norfolk School Committee Budget Subcommittee. So thank you for giving us the opportunity today to share some highlights of our proposed budget for 2016. I'll let you start, Paul.
Thanks. I'd like to start off by reading our district mission. "The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe and joyful and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens for our ever-changing world." And I'd just like to take a minute and walk you through a little bit of budget history of the past seven years, really just giving you an understanding of where the school has been budget-wise and where we were in FY15, and obviously, you've already seen the number for FY16. And a little bit of context around this. So a flat budget for public schools in this district is 3% increase. And what creates that is the funding of the contracts and contractual obligations.
I think you need to speak up just a little bit. I'm seeing some people not being able to hear you.
Sorry about that. I'll back up one minute. Sorry about that. The, a flat budget consists of a 3% increase year over year. That's due to contractual obligations. An increase, an increase above that would be to fund any other cost of living increases, heating oil, other supplies and things like that, where normal costs go up on a year-over-year basis. If this budget, going back to 2009, was kept flat at 3%, we would be at nearly $12 million for FY16. And as you know, we're coming in at 10.8 for FY16. So I believe that the budget that we have, the budget subcommittee and the overall school committee, along with Ingrid and her team, have put together, is very fiscally responsible. That's all.
So as Paul men, I'm going to, I guess I have to get closer. As Paul mentioned, the budget history, as everybody knows, has been really tough for the past seven years. And during that same time, when towns were struggling to fund schools and other departments, there were a lot of new federal mandates that impacted both the elementary and I'm sure King Philip as well, including the federal and state entitlement grants that we received that helped support our budget have declined steadily since 2009, on the federal side by about $332,000 and on the state side by about $30,000. And there has been an increase in unfunded state mandates that the schools have had to absorb. And that would include the cost of fingerprinting and background checks for all employees and volunteers, the adoption of a new ed-of-ow system, training for all of our teachers in sheltered English immersion to support our students that are second language learners, and required professional development for things like suicide training, sheltered English immersion, crisis prevention, things like that. So the impact of that situation is, over the last several years at the elementary level, we had to reduce classroom teaching positions. We've had to eliminate instructional support staff. We've lost the elementary foreign language program, and the health program was also reduced. We've cut technology staff, cut funds for curriculum materials, and fees were added for transportation and for band programs. We also had some reductions in library staffing. Last year, we were very fortunate. The town was generous and supported our budget request at 4.25%. And that was one of the second years that we've been in a position where we've been able to start rebuilding. So last year, we were able to add back critical academic support positions, and that would be developmental reading teachers, developmental math teachers. We brought back a technology integration specialist, increased library staffing, and we were also able to add back one position for physical education. So we partially restored the health education program. Our students at both, the lower elementary and upper elementary have half a year of health education at this point. Our proposed budget request for 2016, as Paul said, is $10,876,598. It's an increase of 4.27%. This request will allow us to maintain our level services. We are not requesting any new positions at this time. The two major initiatives that are included in this budget is that it will first allow us to meet our contractual obligations for salary, but we are also looking to fully fund full-day kindergarten for all students in Norfolk and to eliminate transportation fees. Some of the benefits of full-day kindergarten, the Massachusetts State Frameworks and learning standards are written currently based on a full-day kindergarten model. Most communities in this area do offer free full-day kindergarten for all of their students. Full-day kindergarten, we know, has a positive impact on student achievement in the early years. And we also know that for some populations of students, students with special educational needs, students that are second language learners, students from low-income families, the long-term benefit of a full-day program has a farther-reaching effect. We also know that students in full-day kindergarten have access to more individualized small group instruction, and we know parent ratings of satisfaction versus full-day and half-day are stronger in a full-day model. Also, we think it's really critical. Full-day kindergarten programs do offer more opportunities for students to develop those social skills, to have developmentally appropriate play opportunities, and to become connected to the school community. Just some comparative statistics currently, 305 districts. I'm sorry. Yes, I can. Sorry. So currently, 305 districts out of 312 in Massachusetts do offer full-day kindergarten program options, and 235 of those districts offer universal free full-day. So 77% of communities in Massachusetts have currently free full-day kindergarten. We are currently in the minority. 98% of all students statewide are enrolled in full-day kindergarten programs, and in just this area, Plainville and Franklin currently offer free full-day kindergarten, and it's under discussion in many other communities, Medway, Millis, and Foxborough included. Whoops, sorry. So in order to fund the additional requests that we have, we've really looked at how to cut back. We, we do anticipate one teacher retirement, and we're projecting a savings of about $33,000 there. Special education services, we are expecting a savings of about $25,000. We have reduced materials costs by about $6,000. We do have a decrease in out-of-district tuition. So we have built in the last several years some very strong internal programs within our schools that provide service to students with special disabilities and special educational needs. And as a result, we have saved about $150,000 next year in tuitions for out-of-district costs. We do have about $1,800 in district-wide expenses and about 150 in expenses at one of the buildings that we, so the total savings is about $221,000. Budget additions, as I mentioned, we're not looking for any new positions at this time. We do have about $223,000 in contractual obligations for the teacher's contract and for all other staffs, 2% COLA at $34,000. We need to transition into the operating budget, 2.5 kindergarten positions and 2.5 teaching assistant positions that were previously funded by tuition. So in eliminating the tuition, we have to pick up and absorb the cost of those salaries. So the total increase is about $517,000. And we do have about $150,000 in expense additions for grounds, the $56,000 for transportation. It reflects the elimination of transportation fees for all of our families. So that's why that is up. $29,000 for special education transportation increase. We do have some software and upgrade needs that we have budgeted for, and then some technology maintenance. We're projecting with the current budget that our class sizes will be constant as they were this year, with a range from about 19 students to about 23, which we think are really good, strong, solid class sizes. Just to give you an overview of the breakdown of the budget, about 80% of our total budget goes directly to salaries. So professional salaries, clerical salaries, and other contracted service salaries make up about 80% of the budget. 10% of the budget is services, so that would be our transportation contract that we have with homes, things like that. Only 5%, only 4% of the budget is supplies, 1% other expenses, and about 3% is for tuitions. That's an overview. The elementary request, I think it's KP.
Thank you. KP.
I'm much shorter than she is. Good evening. I'm Dr. Liz Alinsky. I'm the superintendent of King Philip Regional, and I would first like to thank you for opting and choosing King Philip Regional. You have wonderful students, and we really enjoy working with your children every day and giving our very best to make sure that they are successful while they're at KP, which is, as you know, grade 7 through 12, because KP is a hub on their K to 12 journey, and then they go, we get them ready to go off to that ever never-ending college tuition payment that you make. So we do appreciate that. Okay. What I want to first talk about is our current enrollment. King Philip received a very large bubble from the elementary schools. As you know, we serve Norfolk, Plainville, and Rentham. And that bubble is now current sophomores and juniors. So the bubble is sort of beginning to move through the school system and will be graduating in the next year or so. And so our actual enrollment has basically stabilized a little bit, although we do hear that there is an increase in kindergarten and first grade. So it happens. It's a little cyclical. Okay. On this slide, one of the big numbers that affects our funding is special education services. And I just wanted to explain very briefly the three types of services that your children receive or can receive if they're receiving special education at King Philip. The top of the slide, which looks baby blue or white, would be in-district special education programs. Those would be for students who receive services in school that are not their full day. It could be something where they go out for one class, for support services. It could be they have someone that helps to push in a special education teacher, a paraprofessional that meets them in their classroom to receive services. But we do provide those services within the general program. The green bar that you can see has gotten larger over the course of time is what we would call in-district specialized programs. These are specific programs built for students who have a particular profile, particular set of needs that is all-inclusive. So they're usually So they're usually, they have classes that are much smaller and that are providing very specialized instruction for that student's needs. An example would be specific programming for children that may have some social-emotional issues, programming for students that are on the autism spectrum but probably more, that need much more services, because we do have a lot of students with autism that are just within our regular classrooms. The yellow are our out-of-district programs. These are students whose needs are so significant or that are so specialized that we can't build a program around those needs. We do typically use, we are a member of the BIKO Collaborative, and collaborative tuitions are less expensive than a private tuition, and we do seek collaboratives first before we would seek any outside private. We always have to keep in mind what the students' needs are to make sure they're getting what is called for in their IEP. Up this way. Okay, whoops, I gotta go back. We did, we have, as you know, we serve the three towns, and we have a group of students that'll be coming in as seventh graders who all share a similar profile on their special ed services. And each of the towns currently, it's broken up because they, you know, one town may have one, one has two. So there's not enough volume for the individual towns to provide a special program for these students. So the IEPs would call for four one-to-one teaching assistants, two and a half shared assistants to service these students at a general cost of about $260,000. What we are proposing to do is to create another specialized program within King Philip to service these students, so they are not going out of district and they don't, they'll have their services provided within, and also it is reduction on currently being paid. So we're proposing a teacher, a teaching assistant, and two shared assistants for a total difference of about 188,000, which is a $72,000 difference. We also do have some students who are out of district who will be coming back from those more expensive placements to go into this program, so it's still a savings. So I'm going to briefly go over our budget, and I'll explain that this is the adopted budget from the King Philip School Committee, and I have several members that are here tonight, and that was done on March 2nd. As you may or may not know, King Philip is usually the first out of the gate on their budget. We have to have it really set by February. You will see an article later to ask us to push it a little bit further out. So our numbers are very fluid at that time because we have to base it on what we know in March is, it's early to adopt in March 2nd. So typically, what happens is after we vet it a bit, we look for further savings, the school committee will readapt a budget later on, and usually it's right after town meeting. So the towns, you know, look at our budget and give feedback, and we discuss it. So on the adopted budget, salary and benefits, the change is about 3.1 percent. The change in special education is 1.9 percent increase. Additional fixed cost is about .7. All other costs is about .1. For the total requested changes in the adopted budget was 5.8 percent. So our total operating budget request was 29 million, 97,346. The town assessments, which are relative to the adopted budget, each town has assessed their portion based on the number of students they send to King Philip. You can go down and look at Norfolk is about 34.28 percent of the share of students at KP. The FY budget was 7 million, 309,859. The adopted budget portion would be 7 million, 877,636. The difference in dollars, 567,777. And the assessed amount to the town would be 7.8 percent. This was on the adopted budget again for March 2nd. These are identified changes since the March 2nd budget. A salary and benefits, net percent increase of 2 point, oh, sorry, let me go back. Salary and benefits, there was a savings of 93,000. The net increase over the FY '15 was 2.8 percent. Special education savings, we have a reduction of 179,351. Part of this is students returning to King Philip, which also is not just tuition but transportation and other adjustments there. Additional fixed cost savings of 18,360, and all other costs really wasn't a change in that other cost factor. So the total requested changes is a reduction of 291,117 dollars over the budget. So from our operating costs, it's been reduced from what we, the prior slide, to 29,7346. So again, the town assessments on the adopted operating budget, with the revised budget, the differences, if you can look at Norfolk, the dollar savings is 167,836, and percentage was 2.1 percent difference from the assessment from the original. What I will let you know is that there's often talking, you can see the bottom, it talks about excess and deficiencies. King Philip being a regional school district, at the end of the year, balance, you know, the budget comes in, the money goes out, there sometimes is an excess of dollars, different line items may not all be spent out, and those go into a fund called excess and deficiencies. It would be similar to a stabilization account for the town. These funds are allowed by law to go up to about 5 percent of the total operating costs, which is about 1.2 million. And the use of these funds is very specific. We have used these funds to help balance the budget. We've already added those funds, and the school committee voted to do that early, to help make sure that the town assessments were as low as they could be. These funds have helped, if you remember, the wastewater treatment plant, issue at the high school that had to come in that was a $500,000 fix, other issues, it's sort of the emergency contingency fund, roofs, boilers that could go, so we need to have something in case there's an emergency. That's what that fund is typically used for. And this is the town assessment, the debt service on the assessment. So every year, we have two absolutely stellar, beautiful buildings that the three towns have built for us in '04 and '07. You are paying taxes on that, you're being assessed that, and every year, that bill comes down a little bit lower. I will let you know that we will be going out to refinance that in 2017, I hope my year is correct, which means that by refinancing it, we will be saving approximately $2 million in interest payments over the next 10 years that are left, so that savings will be brought back to the towns on that. We have to wait to the 10-year mark before we're able to refinance that, but I thought I would let you know that. And that's what I have.
Thank you very much. Okay, so again, Jack, are you able to put up the budget line items here? So this is how we're going to do it. I'm going to read the particular descriptions for the line items in the budget, and if you want to discuss them, say "hold," and we'll make a note of it up here, and then we'll come back to them and discuss it. So we're not going to read the amounts necessarily, I am going to read the specific line items. There was a handout available on the tables that had all the line items, and I think Jack is going to try and get that up on the screen as well. Well, not perfect, but close. It's as good as we get. Okay, so we're going to start from the top, and Jack will try and keep up. First line item, moderator. Next line item, selectman, town administrator. Advisory, which is the advisory committee. Municipal finance. Board of assessors. Town council. Human resources. Information technology. Tax title and foreclosure. Facilities management. Town clerk, elections, voter registration. Planning board. Zoning Board of Appeals. Planning and development. Town reports. Hold on, police. Fire and ambulance. Ambulance billing. Building department. Waits and measure. Emergency management. Animal inspector. Animal control. Fire police commission. Communication, sorry. DP, was there a hold? DPW administration. Highway. Vehicle maintenance. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's inset there. So Norfolk Elementary. King Philip. Norfolk Aggie. Municipal grounds. Cemetery grounds. Custodian of veterans' graves. Tree warden. Shade tree. Road program. Really? Landfill. Snow and ice. Street lighting. Town vehicle fuel. Transfer station. Board of health. Special programs. Council on Aging. Veteran services. Library. Historical commission. Memorial Day. Fixed costs. Debt service. Okay.
Mr. Moderator, I'm running quite fast enough in asking for a hold on information technology. Is that a hold in there?
Hmm, yes, you may. Information technology is a hold.
You voted.
That's the first one. You're up. Mr. Rosenberg.
I'm David Rosenberg, and I live on North Street, and I just have a question. I saw a significant increase in salary, and I was just wondering what the explanation for the increase in salary is on information technology.
We are hoping, Mr. Moderator, we are hoping to hire some summer help this year with a couple, or college help, to help, we have a couple conversions on some technology. Apparently, I'm a little taller than the superintendent.
No short jokes.
As long as there's no bald jokes.
I think you got me on the baldness, Jack.
Thank you. So again, we're just trying to hire some summer help and maybe some temporary help, college interns, et cetera, through the year to help us do a couple of technology conversions. We have both our website development and our mail system that we're hoping to do some conversions with over the next year.
We move to police. There was a hold there. Mr. Gebfried.
Jim Gebfried, 34, Robin Road. Mr. Moderator threw you to the town meeting. I have a question that relates to how the expenses essentially were worked out for the police vehicles this year. We have an expense item that's listed here for a certain cost. Later on, we have in Article 8, a cost for purchasing two police vehicles at X amount, and then in Article 13, we have another revolving account, which is for purchasing police vehicles for a limit of up to $50,000, instead of, as we know, the price is much higher than that, which is available to stay within that revolving fund, but goes back to the general fund once it goes over 50,000. So I'm trying to understand the process here and how the decisions were made on how we're going to be purchasing these vehicles. I don't have a problem with purchasing the vehicles, it's just a matter that there's three different places in the possible budget or purchasing of them where this occurs, and there's some contradictory things that are going on within the articles that are presented us to tonight. Thank you.
I'm sure either Chief Stone or Mr. Hathaway will tell us that there's nothing contradictory, that we're finding different ways to do this. So if I could get either Chief Stone or Mr. Hathaway to maybe help Mr. Gebfried in answers to his questions. I don't want to jump ahead too much, Chief, and discuss the capital items, but if you could just let everyone know the method to your madness here.
I'm not sure that I'm the method to the madness, but here's where we are. As you know, in years past, we've tried to buy two cars a year, and that usually comes in a form of a warrant article for expense. I'm going to get some rain tonight. There's no money in my budget for cars, and there hasn't been in 15 or 20 years, so I don't know about that. And then the revolving account is something we tried to set up years ago, tried to set up the revolving account, and there's only a couple thousand dollars in it right now, so we really do need the money that's warrant article money to purchase cars, if that explains your question, Joe.
Follow-up, Mr. Gebfried.
Just a clarification, why in the revolving fund, I know we never know how much money's going to go in, but you put a limit of 50K, and then it goes back up to, back to the general fund, and it comes out of that, and then we'd have to apply more money to it if we didn't generate those funds. Why is it only 50K when we know we're talking almost $100,000 for the two vehicles each year?
Yeah, the 50,000 revolving is not my brainstorm, if you want to call it that. It's something that we decided to do quite a while ago. We tried to pass at a town meeting, as you probably remember, to put a certain amount of money in there every year so that we wouldn't be looking at a major expense for vehicles. And right now, there's, happens to be a couple thousand, I just asked Jack, so we really have no recourse but to ask for the money that I asked for for cruisers, so.
I will state, for the town meeting's benefit, that there are limits, overall caps for revolving funds, and you have to set an upper limit. They can't be open-ended. I don't know if Mr. Sneed is rising here, I don't know if he has a comment. Mr. Sneed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a little bit more information on that revolving fund. It was set up, if I recall correctly, for the purpose of channeling funds from special police details where we receive from income, and the hope was that over time, that would build up to supplement the police cruisers. In fact, as Chief Stone has indicated, that at this point is 2,000. There's never been anywhere close to a situation where it's built up to the limit and we've had to return money to the town. That couple of thousand dollars that's there now is all there has ever been, and really the probability that the fund will accumulate a sufficient amount to even purchase one cruiser is minimal. So it's really not a part of the budget picture at all from the standpoint of providing anything meaningful to the police department.
Sir.
Thomas Clay here from 253 Means G. I have a question, what police officers are retiring?
The question was, he was asking which cars are we buying, or which cars are we replacing?
Which vehicles are being replaced?
Okay. We have a 2006 Ford Explorer, that's, it's time for that one to go, and a 2005 Ford Crown Victoria, it's probably way past time for that one to go. Okay?
Does that help him? I hope everyone has their car windows shut, by the way. I hope everyone has their car windows shut, by the way. I'm sorry. A little late for that, sorry. Any other questions on the police line item? Moving along then, waits and measure. Mr. Gebfried.
Jim Gebfried, 34, Robin Road. Mr. Moderator threw you to the town committee, town members. I stand and with our House representative here, I had the opportunity to be at the State Senate and hear an upcoming bill that's moving through the House and will be going to the Senate regarding marijuana and the taxation of marijuana. And in that process and in the bill, it talks about the towns taking over some of the responsibilities for monitoring how marijuana will be distributed in the towns. And it talks about the weight, ensuring that you have the quality of the marijuana, et cetera. Not saying it's going to pass, et cetera, but it's just a sort of a heads-up that maybe in the fall, if this does get passed and goes through, that we may have to revisit some of the various budgets that we have in order to cover the expenses that are going on because in the present bill, there's only $2.5 million allocated and that's for the commission to set up itself and to establish what it's doing and nothing to go back to the local communities to deal with this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gebfried. Fire and police communications.
Mr. Moderator, John Newhebian from Mole Drive. I just wanted to ask where the additional $42,000 is going to be spent? Is it additional communications equipment for the fire station or is it for the new police station?
Mr. Hathaway.
Neither. It's, but you're close, at least the way I understood the question. It's for the new Metacomic Regional Dispatch Center. And actually, we budgeted $25,000 this year. That money is being returned to us because the center didn't get up and running. We budgeted it with the hopes that it was going to get up and running and we were going to start hiring staff this spring. As I talked about earlier, we got delayed when Norfolk bought the building and we had some location changes. So now, part of this money is not, most of this money is to run our current dispatch center in Norfolk and then about $60,000 would hopefully be allocated towards the new Metacomic Regional Dispatch Center to get that up and running. The state will be paying for all the, through the grant, will be paying for all the new equipment there, so we don't have to worry about that. The money that we'll be sending there will be providing staffing. The executive director and probably an IT person will be the first two people that we'll hire on. Obviously, we'll share those costs with the three other towns, Franklin, Plainville, and Rantham. Thank you.
Anything else on this line item? Seeing nothing and moving along, Norfolk Elementary. Mr. Rosenberg.
So this is just a simple question. The slide with expense additions mentioned software for $24,000, $24,500 and technology maintenance for $12,000. I was interested in an explanation of what those are. Thank you.
Dr. Larkin.
Okay. Whoops, now I'm going to adjust this, sorry.
Uh-oh.
Sorry. There's a couple of different things that are included that. On the software side, we've had to purchase a new data management system to track and store all of our student data and information. We also had to purchase antivirus software to protect all the equipment that we have in our network. And we also have become part of a professional development network that allows our teachers to access professional development courses among the collaborative. We also had network upgrades and system upgrades that are part of that.
Mr. Rosenberg, follow-up.
Yes, could you tell me the names of the database software you're using for tracking students and the antivirus software you're using?
The student, the platform we're using for student data management is the same that we use for our teacher evaluation network. It's called Baseline Edge. For the teacher professional development, we're part of the Smart PD network and the antivirus software is, I believe it's Sofos, but I'm not positive on that. Okay?
Thank you. Anything else? As well, take your time.
Hi, Karen Wolf, 6 Fox Hill Lane. I was wondering if I could get some details related to the $150,000 from FY 2015 budget that you're giving back to the town and if those savings have been passed on to the FY 2016 budget.
In one of my slides today, I noted where we were reducing our budget. We had realized some savings in special education out-of-district placements. We had budgeted for a couple of out-of-district placements we anticipated, but we did build programs internally and were able to maintain students in district, so we reduced that line in next year's budget by 150,000, which equates to what we're returning to the town this year.
Anything else on Norfolk Elementary? Moving on, road program.
Hi, Tom Skler here from 253 Main Street. Just have a question about roads, are they going to replace the potholes, what new roads?
So question, I'm sorry, was regarding potholes, I believe. Mr. McGee.
Thank you. Bob McGee, Director of Public Works. Tom, how you doing? This year, with regards to potholes, with the severity of the winter that we had with an extreme amount of snow and an extreme amount of long frost, the roads really fell apart. They actually did last year. And with the beginning, in last year, the governor gave us a, put together a program where each town got a pothole recovery program. The town of Norfolk last year got $58,000. With that money, we applied it not to the individual potholes because there's so many. So what we did was we, we took one street that had the thousand potholes on it. If you remember, last year it was Park Street and we used all that money up on Park Street and went on to repair other words, other roads with Chapter 90. This particular year, Union Street fell apart, just like Park Street did last year. And again, the state gave us $58,000 above and beyond the Chapter 90 funds that we receive each year. And this year, as of last week, we took that money. I went to the selectmen and the selectmen matched those funds and then some and we paved pothole-ridden streets, five of them. We did Union Street. We did, again, another section of Park Street, section of Fruit Street, section of Seekong Street and one more. So that's what we did with our pothole funds this year. Great question.
Anything else on roads? Yes, sir.
Hi, Tom Klaena, 253 Main Street, different Tom Klaena. What is the plan to complete the repair of Main Street from the Franklin Line to approximately George Street? I know that was in discussion last year. I don't know what happened with that.
Mr. McGee.
Yes. Last year, we proposed an article and to use Chapter 90 money, we asked the town to put up money for our main streets. So there was a section of Main Street, now we're going back last year, where we proposed to mill and repave. Milling is a process where we just scarify off the top inch and a half and then we come back with another layer of an inch and a half. And so from the Old Town Hall, if you can picture this, from the Old Town Hall down to Seekong Street was the worst section. So we asked the town for some money. That, along with the town also combined the paving of Lake Street, which is still on hold. So we got a sum of money, I'm not sure if it was 500, I don't have that dollar figure right now, but so much of that was allocated to Main Street. We never got to that project. We still have the funds. It was, again, awarded to us through an article. But this year, after, again, this winter, other parts of Main Street have, has fallen apart. But this year, we didn't propose an article. Would love to have, but the funds are just not there, knowing that ahead of time. So we're going to use Chapter 90 funds and just like you mentioned, we're going to start at the Franklin Line and segments of Main Street, all the way from Franklin to the Walpole Town Line, need some repair. Some sections are good, some sections we did, we did a couple of years ago. So I'm not going to name those sections. They're almost pretty obvious. If you drove them, you'd know what I was talking about. But hopefully, when school's out, we're going to, we're going to, and I'll volunteer this information, we're going to replace some old cobblestones because we're almost done with that project. And we're going to do Main Street and we're going to make it a real quick headache instead of it lingering on. So we're going to try to get those projects together. There's going to be a lot of detour going on, but I hope you're all going to be pleased with it when we're, we're complete with these two projects.
Thank you. Anything else on roads? Okay, that is all the holds. So we are ready for a vote. To recall, the motion was to appropriate a little more than $36 million. Seeing no further questions or comments, all those in favor of the budget as presented, please say aye. All those opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. Thank you for your patience, everybody. Moving on to number six, Article number six. Mr. Sneed.
Mr. Moderator, I move to adopt the fiscal year 2016 budget for the Water Division in the amount of $1,598,020, as shown on the screen.
Before you give an explanation, looks like no one's interested in your presentation, Pat. I can't figure it out. We're going to put the budget last next year, Jack. Okay, Mr. Sneed.
Mr. Hathaway, will you be doing the presentation or should I just? That, oh, okay. That's my presentation. I understand. Okay. The, this simply approves the budget of the water.
Speak up a little bit, just because there's a little bit of residual noise.
This article simply provides the budget for the Water Division, which as was early, explained earlier, is a separate division. It is not part of the town's actual operating budget. It's sustained by the payments by the users of the water system and that's its sole source of revenue. So this is not town money that's being spent here, it's the money of the water users. As you can see, a small increase from last year.
Any questions, comments, discussion on the water budget? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Passes unanimously. Article number seven. Mr. Sneed.
Mr. Moderator, I move to adopt the fiscal year 2016 budget for the Sewer Division in the amount of $96,750, as shown on the screen or, as soon will be shown on the screen.
You all set, Jack? Here we go. Mr. Sneed.
This is a relatively, relatively new item. Last year, we approved the acquisition of the Sewer Division, which services the center of town. The estimated operating budget at that point was $100,000 a year. We had about a $50,000 item in the fall and now we have our first full-year budget of not quite $100,000. This, like the water fund, is fully paid by the users of the system. There is no town money involved here, no town tax money, I should say.
Any questions, comments, discussion on Article number seven, the sewer budget? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Passes unanimously. Article number eight, Mr. Sneed.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate the sum of $288,907 for the purposes of paying for the cost of acquiring two police cars, a fuel monitoring system, a high-band radio system, three gas detectors, a vehicle for the fire department, portable radios for the police department and a DPW pickup truck. As further described in the screen and in the handout, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $288,907 be transferred from free cash.
Mr. Sneed.
Not too much to say about this one. The details are there on the screen. These are items that are needed for the purposes indicated and the advisory committee has recommended this, the approval of this article.
So these are capital projects. Anyone have any questions about any individual items or the amount in total? Seeing no comments or questions, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Passes unanimously. Article nine, Mr. Sneed.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate the sum of $235,000 for the purpose of paying for the cost of acquiring an ambulance, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, is hereby authorized to borrow $235,000 under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, parentheses 9, of the general laws or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
Mr. Sneed.
Again, another straightforward article. This is simply a borrowing article to enable us to purchase an ambulance.
Any questions, comments? This is a borrowing article? We have a question over here. This is a borrowing article. It will require a two-thirds vote. That is why it is segregated from the other capital items. Sir.
David Axberg, 106 Seekong Street. Just curious, do we have to provide ambulance service to the prisons?
I believe so. I don't know if anyone wants to explain that. We do.
Is there any funding because of that for this? Instead of having to borrow, can we go to the state?
Is that another short joke there, Jack? Sorry, chief. Sorry, I have more hair than both of you.
Hi, Cole Bushnell, Fire Chief, Town of Norfolk. As I dropped the microphone. The issue of providing EMS service, emergency medical services to the Department of Correction is one that's covered under licensure with the Town of Norfolk. We are granted a license through the Department of Health Office of Emergency Medical Services. That licensure requires us to provide all medical services to any individual within our community, whether resident or not. In situation involving the prisons, we do have an obligation to respond there. Do we respond there quite frequently? Yes, we do. One of the things that we have in our favor over the last two years is we've been able to renegotiate our contract with the Department of Corrections. For many years, the contract was through UMass Health out of Worcester. What would happen is say for a standard advanced life support transport, where we would bill $1,000 to someone that we'd pick up on the street or from their home, the state would graciously pay us about $290 under contract. It was a very draconian way of us to provide service. When the state went with the Mass Partnership for Community Health, a new conglomerate, which has taken over a number of the healthcare requirements for DOC properties throughout the country, the new contractor came in and we debated with them for quite a while as to how we could improve our situation, being small Norfolk and being responsible for three DOC properties. We were fortunate enough to hit a accord with them and we talked about just being at Medicare payment. What we're successful in doing through the Fire Chief Association of Massachusetts, and I was by default the coordinator for this, which involves seven other fire departments in the Commonwealth, we're able to put forward a package where we now get dollar-for-dollar transport for any inmates from any one of our three prisons. It makes it very lucrative. It ensures that we have funding available, so now when our ambulance- our ambulance transports, we actually bring staffing back, so that we always maintain a minimum staffing of three in the station. It's been a very good program, it's one long overdue, and we're very grateful for, for the assistance that we've received in that regard. So, answer your question, yes, we do, we, we are funded very well at this point, we're, we're hopeful that contract is going to continue, and I hope that answers your question.
Good, I'm glad, thank you. Mr. Geefried.
Jim Geefried, 34 Robin Road, Mr. Moderator, through you, to the members of the town meeting. I had a question for the chief, two questions. One has to do with the purchase price, in what in the new ambulance that, that we're purchasing is the increase in technology that we're gaining with the new vehicle compared to our past one? And the second one is, my ongoing concern that we've had in trying to provide reciprocal aid to communities. We had a decision where Gillette Stadium came in, and when situation arises there, we have to provide assistance there. But when we tried to interject the need for funding to come from Gillette to the surrounding towns, Walpole and ourselves, to meet some of these needs for ambulances, et cetera, we were rebuffed. Now, we have the Plainville Casino that's going in, it's going to open in June, have another large establishment that has the potential for us having to respond reciprocally. And again, we tried to ask in legislation that we receive something, and we didn't. Can you just comment about the, the process as these things move forward, how we might be able to reopen negotiations to get some sort of assistance back from these large institutions, when we have to provide some support? And the other is, what is the new technology? Thank you.
On the latter, Chief, I'd, I'd like to confine it to how it may affect our capital needs regarding ambulances. I don't want to get into a large discussion about various and assorted pieces of mutual aid, just as, as it applies to your capital needs for EMTs.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think to answer the second part of the question, Mr. Kraft knows I'm a Giants fan, that's the problem. Moving forward with the ambulance, new technology will be in terms of the braking system, in terms of the economy, in terms of operation of diesel engine. One of the things that we're confronted with, which just came up on, on Friday, is there's a, a new regulation that is seemingly coming forward in terms of the means in which a stretcher is actually loaded into an ambulance, and how it's locked in place. We're, we're in contact now with the Department of Public Health, the OEMS, through the Fire Chief Association, is the group that I serve with on EMS Subcommittee, to try to get that resolved. But the, the ambulance itself that will be coming in will, will be of the latest technology. It'll be purchased, instead of through bid, this will be purchased through the Massachusetts Collective Bar, Collective Purchasing Program, MAPC, where the ambulances are put out to, a basic bid specification is put out to all the vendors that are approved by the state, and a contractual price comes back, so we don't have to bid. So, we, we'll be going, soliciting one of these firms, and that price will also include trading in the existing 2006 ambulance, which, which is on our stock right now. To answer the questions, Mr. Moderator?
Sounds good to me, Chief.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions about Article Nine, borrowing for an ambulance? Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous vote. Article Ten, Mr. Sneed.
Mr. Moderator, excuse me, Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article Ten.
Mr. Sneed.
This article would fund any road projects that it was the intent to borrow, to fund, but we have no projects of that nature this year.
Any questions on indefinite postponement? Seeing none, all those in favor, oh.
I, I just wanted to point out, very briefly, because Mr. McGee brought it up earlier, we had, we had about $300,000 projects that we approved through this last year. Obviously, we're always mindful of our debt budget as well, so we're balancing that. This year, we had, when Governor Baker took office, he appropriated it, an additional half, if you will, an extra $100 million, which, and originally $200 million had been released by Governor Patrick. So, we received an additional, it's on your budget under road program there, an additional $180,000 or $190,000. So, between last year's programs that we approved here, that we still are working on, as Bob said, on Main Street and some of the other projects, with our additional Chapter Ninety funds that the, the Selectmen and, and Bob put together, we feel there's enough, while we'd love to do every road in town all at once, we're trying to balance the projects we have with managing our debt budget as well. So, there will be more projects in the future, but we think we've got enough money to, to work on, make a dent this year. Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of indefinite postponement, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes. Article Eleven requires no motion, it is an opportunity for various boards and officers to provide reports. We have four today that have asked to give a brief report, starting with Mr. Leehan from the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This really isn't so much of a report, as it is informational opportunity. Some of you may know that we've been working with a developer for a proposed project on what's known as the Old Southwood Hospital site, which is on Route One A. He approached us a little over a year ago, and because of the magnitude of this project, it's the largest project Norfolk, I think, has ever seen, it has tremendous implications on our infrastructure, our schools, our capabilities in terms of water and things of that nature, and we had to look through all of the considerations, because he would need a zoning change that would have to come before this board. So, we put together a working committee, that committee has been working now for over a year in meeting with this developer, in fact, met as recently as four o'clock this afternoon. That committee, I just want to tell you, consists of all of the boards, Mr. Tom Gilbert from the Board of Health, John Weddleton from Conservation, Walter Byron from the Planning Board, Chris Reeder from the Zoning, Zoning Board of Appeals, I was the representative from the Board of Selectmen, Ray Goff is our town planner, as well as three citizens, Aaron Hunt, Peter Diamond, and Joyce Terriell. These folks have met probably 12 times over the last year concerning this project, and we now want to bring this information forward for public opinion, so to speak. So, you see three dates. May 19th, the developer will be there to make a presentation before the Board of Selectmen, that is really informational, to get it out before you folks. He will be then doing a cable show, which you will see on, obviously, the cable station, and then we're going to have a public forum here at the middle school on, I guess it's May 21st, at seven o'clock. And I really encourage you all to come, this is a very, very large project, a lot of work has gone into it, a lot of issues associated with it, and we, we want folks to be really, really fully informed, because it will have an impact on our community. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Leehan. Affordable Housing Trust.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Bill Crump, 46 Mass Ave. You're going to do it? Go for it. Just a little overview on who's on our committee, we have Scott Ditterich, who's our chairman, Jim Leehan, who's our Selectmen representative, Mark Henny, Bill Conklin, Tom Cleverden, Sandy Smith, Bill Crump, myself, and of course, Sue Jacobson, who keeps us all in line. So, what is affordable housing? It applies to those that fall at or below 80% of the median income level of the area. An example, and this was just recently updated, a family of four must have earned, earned income not to exceed $67,750, have a maximum asset level of $75,000, and it's expected that the total home operating expenses will not exceed 30% of the income level. So, as you can see, it's roughly $20,000 for a family of four to participate in this program. All homes that are part of affordable housing in the town have deed restrictions that run in perpetuity with the, with the property. So, this is a slide that we, we show every year, it's for those folks that haven't either been to town meeting, or don't understand what affordable housing means and what the benefits are. Just a few highlights, it puts properties on the tax roll to increase revenue for the town, adds units to our affordable housing inventory, it strengthens the town's standing with Commonwealth as a community actively pursuing affordable housing. And what I like to consider probably one of the stronger points is that it begins to strengthen the town's leverage with developers utilizing the 40B guidelines. The goal, or one of the really significant goals, I would say, within the program, is we, we love to focus on local preference. Ideally, if we can have either a teacher, or fireman, or town employees, or residents that apply, we'd love to be able to have them participate in the program to create that local preference. There's another slide, as we go further, that'll, and it'll show you where we're at as far as the total number of affordable houses that are currently at local preference. The whole goal is to not only promote affordable housing, but to do it within the construct of proximity to town center. With the exception of a few homes that we've done, Mira Lake, Old Populatic, Cleveland Street, most of them are within school, within the areas of the schools and play areas with sidewalk access. Proceeds from the, the home sales help to promote future affordable housing from the So, current status, as of today, we've conducted our fourth lottery as of this past January. Since the last report in May of, of last year, we purchased three homes, Park Street, North Street, and one on Cedar. One of the homes is finalizing construction on Medway Branch, and we have two homes that are pending final sale, Park Street, which is soon, I think, and Medway Branch, which is also soon, I think sometime in June. Our next lottery is scheduled for the fall of this year, where we hope to have, we hope to have about three more homes that are ready for lottery. Just quickly running through, these are some of the homes that give you an idea of what they typically look like, where they're scattered throughout the town. So, Jack, if you could just pop through that, that's one on North Street, and this is the one on Cedar Street, okay? And this is our Medway Branch house, okay? This last house, just go back, this last, this last house was part of the ones that were on the Gumps property in the back, so it's one of the ones that was kind of a spill over from the last project that we were working on. Main Street, this is actually one that I'm really excited about, I, I've been trying to spearhead this one for probably about two years now. This is the, the house, or the parcel of land that's right next to HOD, if you're heading west on Main Street. It used to have that house on the left, it now longer has that house. And we're hoping that come, I'd probably say in the next 30 days, that we're going to start to go down this road to develop this house. It's a great project, it's a truly a win-win project, joint initiative between us and the students at Tri-County Regional Voke, where we obviously send kids from Norfolk that participate, obviously gives them practical life experiences for various trades. The kids at Tri-County are just coming off of a home that they're building for Franklin, that I've walked through and other committee members have walked through, the product is extremely impressive, very state-of-the-art, and so we're really excited to be bringing this forward to the town, and hope to, they're, based on their school year, they're planning to start this sometime in September, and hopefully finish it by the end of their school year next year. So, you'll see a sign that's going to go up there pretty shortly, that announces that partnership, and these are essentially the, the plans that you'll see. So, so this kind of runs through, the, the highlights, I won't bore you with the details on the center section, but the highlights, since 2011, we've had 15 homes added to the affordable housing stock. Nine of those homes, and this is one of the keys that I mentioned earlier, are local preference. So, that's a tremendous percentage. You know, again, it's, we don't set how the local preference is set, that's done on the state level, but everybody's put into a lottery, so it ended up being that that's how it worked out. So, it's a positive, in my opinion. So, we have 13 homes of the 15 that are presently occupied, one is pending completion, that's the one on Medway Branch, and the one that's pending construction is the one we just mentioned on Main Street. So, that's pretty much it, that wraps it up for affordable housing. We appreciate everybody's continued support, and, and hope that you'll support us with an approval on Article Twenty-Two of the Town Warrant for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cronin's going to give us an update on the Public Safety Building.
As you all know, this town is in dire need of expanded facilities for both police and fire. There's been several proposals, I think, over the last 10 years, I've only been involved in the last three. But we're excited about the, the proposal that we hope to bring in the fall town meeting. Right now, where we stand, as Mr. Hathaway said, we now own the building on Sharon Ave, which is going to be the, the Regional Communications Center, in other words, the dispatch center for all fire and police for four towns, and we're going to be, the plan is, we're going to be collecting rent, because we own the building. We hope to locate our police department down there, and therefore, we can turn over the existing building completely to the fire department, which would mean a renovation of the existing fire station, plus a big addition for new bays. It's hard to believe that fire trucks have gotten much bigger in the last 50 years since we built that, but they have. We have hired a construction management firm, we put out bids for architects, we got six proposals. After reading the resumes, we narrowed them down to four, we interviewed those four architect firms, we narrowed that down to two, we called in a final interview for the number-one firm, and actually, we're meeting tomorrow night to take a final vote, to hopefully enter into a contract negotiation, to get this firm to come up with some schematic designs and cost proposals that we can bring back to the town next fall, so that hopefully, the plan is to renovate the, the building on Sharon Ave, and, and get the Regional Communications Center in there, and once that done, that's done, we can move the police department down there, and now, we can renovate and put an addition on the current fire station after the police are gone, so that it would minimize the disruption between the departments. And also, it's going to provide the most space for us at the, at the least amount of cost. So, we're excited about this proposal, and the plan is to, to bring back a comprehensive proposal with costs at a fall town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. And I have in my notes that the Planning Board was interested in providing a report, is that true? No? Yes? Okay, well, moving along. We have some zoning later, I'm sure we'll see some Planning Board comments. Article Twelve, Mr. Hurwitz.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article Twelve, as printed in the warrant.
Mr. Hurwitz.
So, Article Twelve is the Chapter Nine, Chapter Ninety Road Funds. This is typically a boilerplate article, sorry, Chapter Ninety Road Funds. This is a boilerplate article you likely see every year, it authorizes us to, to spend the Chapter Ninety funds on road maintenance and improvements, and it's anticipated to be about $390,000 from the state this year.
Thank you. Any questions on the Chapter Ninety funds? Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds vote, because it does authorize the town to borrow? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It passes unanimously. Article Thirteen, Mr. Hurwitz.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article Thirteen, as printed in the warrant.
This is our annual article for a number of revolving funds. Mr. Hurwitz.
The, the revolving funds that are listed in this article have all been previously approved. This is essentially set up to approve the incoming revenues or, or fees into those expenses, and then used for various funds for each of those purposes, as listed in the warrant. Typically, these are not, they're capped, in terms of the amount of expenses that can be collected in any one fund. be collected in any one fund. And in aggregate, they don't warrant, there's not enough funds, not enough expenses in each of those revolving funds to warrant separate consideration. And the advisory committee does recommend passage of this warrant article.
Any question on any of the revolving funds or the article as a whole? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It passes unanimously. Article 14.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 14 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded. Mr. Hurwitz.
Okay, so Article 14 is essentially authorizes the Board of Selectmen to accept any money which is received through grants that's applied by, applied for by various town departments or boards.
Any questions, comments, discussion on Article 14? Mr. Rosenberg.
Are you aware of any grants that have been requested, or any funds that are likely to come in that would fall under this?
Mr. Hathaway.
The schools actually are the largest probably grant receivers, but in addition, the police receive, it's probably under $10,000, $6,000 now. As we talked a little bit about earlier, the Emergent Management Department receives $5,000 to $10,000 per year. Fire Department does a good job of applying for grants. Typically, we'll get somewhere in the $12,000 to $20,000 range. I think Peter's looking for new radios next year, municipal collaborative grant for the energy. Is that the one you're talking about? $25,000 grant last year with the Energy Committee got. So, there's a lot of, there's no, unfortunately, recently, there haven't been any big monster grants, but, you know, the $10,000 to $20,000 range each by department.
Thank you. Any further discussion, questions, comments on the article? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It passes unanimously. Article 15.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 15 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded. Mr. Hurwitz.
Okay, so Article 15 authorizes the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift or purchase or any other means easements necessary in the construction of public ways and roadways to ensure that there's appropriate structures for drainage purposes and other maintenance activities related to those roads.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you. Again, the question is, are you aware of any such easements that are likely to come up within this year?
If there were specific easements or roads, there would be a separate town meeting article naming them specifically. This relates more to just general powers, but if Mr. Hathaway has any further explanation. Typically, Mr. Rosenberg, if we had like road acceptances for a subdivision, those would have to be specifically named in a separate article. But during the course of the year, different smaller easements come up, and this is an attempt, I believe, Mr. Hathaway, to give some omnibus authority to take care of those. Any questions, further questions on Article 15 or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It passes unanimously. Article 16.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 16 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded. Mr. Hurwitz.
Okay, so Article 16 will grant the Board of Selectmen the authority to sell any surplus property to town with the exclusion of buildings and land, so any property that's no longer needed.
Mr. Rosenberg.
I bet you can guess what this question is going to be. Are you aware of any particular surplus property that's likely to come under the scope of this article this year?
A chief's car, now that we bought him a new car. Yeah, typically, it's vehicles that, we'll put it up on the website, or we'll go through one of the municipal collaboratives for a public auction. We're selling those types of things. Occasionally, the school will have things that they'll want to sell off, old desks or things. There haven't been a lot of things, a lot of, you know, we tend to wear things out until they're junk, but vehicles are the biggest thing.
Mr. Rosenberg, that satisfy you?
Yes, it did.
Excellent. Any further discussion on Number 16? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It is unanimous. Mr. Sterling, Article 17.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to approve the indebtedness authorized by the Regional District School Committee of the King Philip Regional School District for the purpose of paying the costs of designing and constructing an artificial turf athletic field, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto.
Just a brief word, and then we'll have some further discussion on this. This read a little bit differently than you see in your article. It's not fundamentally different at all in terms of what's being accomplished here. It's just the different means of getting at the same amount of money. There are some advantages to doing it this way. The article as written in your warrant would have required a two-thirds vote. This vote will only require a majority vote, and it will only require two out of the three towns in the King Philip District to support it in order to pass. Briefly, Mr. Sterling, then I think we have a brief presentation on this as well.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There are three compelling reasons to support this article. One is that it will bring us up to the standard of 80% of the competition that our student athletes face in the Hockmuck League. 80% of the schools there already have a turf field. Second, it will reduce the spending and increase revenues from the use of the field, i.e., we expect, or the school committee has indicated, that they expect to be able to rent the fields out for late-night soccer, for example. Third, and perhaps most compelling, if you don't have a student at the school, approximately 60% of the cost of these turf fields will, of this turf field, excuse me, has been raised by the efforts of the eponymously-named Turf Committee, and they have raised approximately $400,000 to support this effort. So, that's approximately 60% of the cost, i.e., that's discounting what we have to pay for this. Now, you notice this article does not have a number authorizing spending. The way the spending will materialize on our accounts is probably in 2017, and at that point, there'll be a line item listing a portion of the debt that we will need to pay for the cost of putting these turf, the turf field into place. Now, because there are a number of initiatives underway to fund the turf enhancement, the cost could be, to the town, could be as little as $75,000 at that time. It will not exceed approximately $198,000. We have compelling indications from the Turf Committee, from the School Committee, that the cost will be at the lower end of that range. But there are uncertainties in that. Based on the balance of considerations, the benefits to the town, student athletes, potential revenues, the fact that we have a unique opportunity to do this at a very low cost, we feel that the risk of paying more than $75,000 is well worth the investment at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Sterling. We have a few slides prepared. Why don't we just go through them? They're prepared by King Philip Crew. Tough to top that presentation.
That was excellent.
I think I read all the slides.
I'm back, and I have to move the microwave, microphone down again. Okay. So, just very quickly, I'm just really going to confirm what was said. The proposed turf field will meet our current need, which we really aren't meeting, and exceed it, which is going to allow us to rent the facility out. The demands of what's going on, the current grass field, so you know, we can only have 30 events about a year on that grass field. If anybody was at the recent girls' lacrosse game, it was basically a dust ball. It's a real problem. You know, the field, we put a lot of effort into it. The green field looks okay, and the kids play, and it just deteriorates very quickly. We will meet the demand for our usage, which is about 800 uses per year. Our usage is about an hour, so some games are longer than an hour is about a usage, which is an increase of 550 uses. The community will have the ability, of course, the students at King Philip, their games need to take preference, but the community will be able to access those fields, and we'll be scheduling them in so other games in the community can be played on there. It will be able to generate revenue. It allows for hosting of upper-level tournament games. If anyone doesn't know, we've made into a couple tournaments, and when MIAA comes down to inspect the fields, we are declined use of having a tournament game as our home game there because they will, they will not allow us to play on it because it's not in great shape. Okay, here we go. The current grass field doesn't meet our, or generate any more usage than we currently have. To bring it up to a really playable standard, it would cost approximately $350,000 to regrade, to revitalize that. And maintaining the field is about $35,000 a year or $40,000 annually. That's without labor. That's grass, that's water, fertilizer, et cetera. When you do, if you chose to revitalize the regular grass field, we lose two playing seasons on that field, which means students will have to be bused to other fields to play, which, again, increase the cost. And this process has to be repeated every two or three years because the field just gets hammered. As we said, it will increase our usage. Potential hours used, about 132. Marching band is about 60 hours. You can see sort of how that breaks out. Athletics is about 72 hours, games and practices. And weekdays, some weekend tournament opportunities would be on that field also. So, as we said, we have about, eight out of the 10 of the Hockmuck League have turf fields. The synthetic fields can be plowed, which means that if there's snow, we can plow, and the kids can still be on the field. So, this year, we spent a little bit of money, okay, quite a bit of money, in order to get the spring season started early, we had to ship kids to different sites, which we had to pay for. Potential income, we're figuring on a yearly basis, on a very minimal amount, would be an extra 160 hours that we could rent the field out at about $125 an hour. That would go into a fund to replace the carpet, not the whole field, but just the top carpet. Needs to be replaced, they're saying, between every 10 and 12 years. And that, over the course of time, that money will build up, and that'll be used to purchase the next carpet. Financials, our bid came in at 624. There's a contingency piece of the bid. Total estimated costs are 686, 432. Less cash available, we have about $130,000 in actual dollars that was brought in, dollar for dollar that we have currently in hand. The difference there is there was a website on this, there were some legal fees, and the fees to get the bid prepared for engineering came out of that money. Okay? So, it's $109,000 cash on hand. Balance forward is about $576,000. That does not include some outstanding pledges, but I can't tell you the pledges are in right now, but there are some outstanding pledges. The opportunity for some in-kind, and then there's a small $100,000 line item, the budget I heard about, that we're hoping that that does get passed, and that will all come in. That would further reduce the cost to the towns, but based on that number, which is the cash, again, in hand that we have, the Norfolk assessment, again, 34.20%, at the max, would be about $197,000, but we believe it will be lower, because we know that some of the pledges are still coming in. And just, it's a, again, it's a benefit, and it's something that our kids really need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Mr. Gibfree.
Jim Gibfree, 34, Robin Road. Mr. Moderator, through you to the town meeting. I have just a question. Over many years, the types of materials that we've used in the school for recreation have changed because we have found that there have been issues with the materials and the safety for the children in using them. And I can give many examples. My question here is now, as artificial turf has also been an issue in the past of a health issue and the types of injuries on an artificial turf. Can you just explain how you made a decision regarding the artificial turf? I'm sure the other schools have as well. And assuring the parents and as well as the players that their concerns in the past will be addressed by the types of materials that are going to be used here?
Dr. Liz.
Thank you. Two pieces. One are studies that have gone on in artificial turf regarding physical injuries, knees, elbows, falls. The artificial turf at the high school level, okay, is not, is about the same as if it's on a grass field. That's what the studies show with that piece. Same number of potential concussions, whether it's grass or artificial turf field. Some sports lend themselves to more particular types of injuries than other sports, but when the analysis is done and we have those, that information, they're about equal turf field, grass field to turf. And currently, a turf field would be in a lot better condition, probably less injuries than what we're currently getting on the grass field because the condition is so poor. The other piece is the materials that are made in the turf field. This has been in the news. There has been some concerns. We actually have been in contact with the Department of Health and EPA, and some of the news stories are, have not been scientifically vetted. There's people who are writing things that hasn't gone through in actual research. Department of Health has had many inquiries. The Massachusetts Department of Health has done that research, and we do have letters, and they are actually on our website under the May 4th, May 4th School Committee meeting. All of our documents are up there, and we have all those health-related letters and articles are a part of our school committee packet, so you can actually go and read those. And basically, it's, there is no, they see no health risks. They have done studies on that. Some of the issues from before were older fields that contained other materials, and the materials are really up to code and meet the specifications.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Ms. Pamela.
Yes. Pamela Russell, 143 North Street. Since I have a dog that has lymphoma, and I've been dealing with it for two years, I've really made a study of the causes of non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. And one of the things that I read about these fields, and I do, I am ignorant about this, but I have found that sometimes things that are approved, later on, we discover that they're not so great for us. And I have here something that says, "It's enough to make or ask whether crumb rubber artificial turf, a product that has been rolled out in tens of thousands of parks, playgrounds, schools, and stadiums in the U.S., is safe for the athletes and kids who play on it. Others across the country are now raising similar questions, arguing that the material made out of synthetic fibers, scrap tire, which contain benzene, carbon black, and lead, among other substances, has not been adequately tested. Few studies have measured the risk of ingesting crumb rubber orally, for example." So, 38 of the goalies that they checked have lymphoma because they're on the ground. They're reaching, they're ingesting this stuff. So, I think to spend this much money, and I'm sorry, I just feel guided to say this, to go ahead and say, "Yeah, this is great, let's do it because everyone else is doing it," may be not a wise thing, you know? If one kid gets lymphoma from this, whatever, I just think that, you know, after knowing what I've just been going through for my dog, you know, to see a child go through this because they get cancer from, I don't know, maybe I'm nuts, but I think it's a little early to say, "Yeah, let's do it," just because everyone else is doing it.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
Water alone.
I don't know if Dr. Zelinski wants to answer that, or I have another question I'm not going to answer.
I think she did address previously that we are getting more or less the latest research in terms of materials with this new product, if that's what I heard correctly. Okay. Question, Mr. Hathaway.
I just want to throw my support for this article. I, you know, as a long time, I'm a Norfolk resident as well, 25 Evergreen Road, longtime youth lacrosse coach. I am so tired of... I am so tired of having our teams be behind the eight ball when we go play Franklin in particular, I hate those guys. You know, they have two fields, and at least, and then they're on the field a month or two before us. And it just, you know, as Dr. Liz talked about, we'll have the opportunity for the youth programs to be on this field as well. I would be remiss if I didn't point to my lovely bride, who is the KP Field Hockey Coach, and she, I have been watching those games for 10 years, and I don't know the rules yet. I've tried. But they are at such a disadvantage, and so I just encourage, it is a competitive reason to have this field. It is a financial reason, which is back to my day job. I see, you know, the athletic director and the crew out there spending just countless hours trying to get the fields playable, both in the fall and the spring. So I think for financial purposes and competitive reasons, this is the right thing to do, and I encourage you to support this article.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Mr. Sneed.
I just also wanted to add support for this article. Mr. Hathaway's comment about lacrosse reminded me that there are many other purposes that this field will get used, besides just the obvious one of football. It will be marked for several different sports, don't ask me which ones. It will also be used by the marching band. Teams that have not been able to practice on the field will be able to now practice on a real field. One of the coaches told me a few years ago that his freshman football team had never set foot on the actual football field, so that sort of thing will be in the past. And even the tennis team will benefit conceivably because they will now be able to, they can't get the snow out of the fenced-in tennis courts, but they can get it off the turf field, and they can set it up, they can set up tennis nets. So teams, benefits that you would not even think about in the normal course of thinking about sports will benefit as well as other programs.
Thank you. I think with this gentleman up in the aisle first, and then another question down here.
John Newhian from Noel Drive. I just, it sounds like a great idea. I just have a couple of questions for clarification, Mr. Moderator, on the funding aspect of it. I thought I saw in the published warrant, $400,000 was already provided, and I see a number of $109,000 here, so I'm a little bit confused about that. And also, I heard that this expense would be in 2017. I don't know how this town meeting can bind a future town meeting in 2017.
Let me do the last part of that first, and I'll let Dr. Liz address the first part. All, we're not borrowing here, we're authorizing the regional school district to go out and borrow. By the time it hits our books, we'll be voting on the next fiscal year. So, and I'll let Dr. Liz ask, answer the first part about what we've received, I guess, to date in terms of contributions.
Sure. The sign-out in front of KP that shows $400,000, that is a combination of pledges, I call them pledges, that come in, both those that are cash, those that, we have different groups that have pledged a certain amount that are paying it, you know, a little bit at a time. And then we have approximately $150,000 to $200,000 in what would be called in-kind donations, and those are donations that would become a part of during the construction. So it's a range, it's based on pricing that occurs, so that's where we get that amount for pledges. But the, but what I can present to you, that I can tell you is firm, like I said, is that we have the bid of the field, the contingencies that are built in, the less, the cash available, so the balance right now is 576, but we still have some pledges that are coming in, so that number gets, the number gets lower as the pledges come in. And so that's where, and again, we're hoping, we're hoping that thing in the state budget goes really well. And so that will lower it. So that's why we, when they spoke, they said it could be anywhere from $75,000 to, this again, would be the high-end $197. We think it's going to be much more the lower, but I'm only presenting what I have in hand right now for you.
Follow-up quickly.
Question, how have the other towns voted?
We're the first.
We're the first.
Okay. Ms. Sneed.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I'm Barbara Sneed. I am at 19 Frederickson Road. I'm also on the turf field committee, as well as the president of the King Philip Music Association. I got involved in this project in 2011 after others before me had been working on it for four years. So we've been at this since 2007, when the school was built, at which time, we did not have the money to build the turf field because we had found asbestos in the building. So over this period of time, since 2007, we've been trying to raise this money, and there's been a lot of starts and stops, and we really finally got traction over these last few years when the athletic associations and the music associations joined together. We have tried to get money from Mr. Kraft, we have tried to get money from some of the larger companies in the area, but we were unsuccessful, but we were very successful in getting some significant donations from many people in this room. I'm talking about some people giving $25,000 out of their own personal accounts. I really support this effort. As the president of the music association and a member of the King Philip School Council, our children really deserve this. They, not only is it a question of being on the level playing field, it's a question of their ability to play or perform at full capacity. Our marching band actually currently practices on the parking lot. So if you want to talk about problems, we've got a lot of shin splints, we've got kids who've actually had concussions out on the parking lot, not to mention some of the athletic athletes out on the current field, which is as hard as a rock. As far as the health concerns are concerned, as Dr. Liz said, we have information on the King Philip website. I've done some of my own research. Some of us use hair products, some of us use all sorts of cosmetics. I would challenge you to look into some of the things that are in those products, and I'd also challenge you to look into what's in some of the products that we put on the grass field. So I really, really hope that you support this project. Our kids really deserve it.
Thank you, Ms. Sneed. Mr. Rosenberg.
I'd appreciate some clarification of the in-kind contributions. In particular, are they donations of construction material that would reduce the $576,000 because materials don't need to be bought, or are they other things that are in addition to what's in the funded part of the project?
It's construction material. It's in the process.
And, and that's approximately?
It's a range, it'd be, a potential donor is offering, so long as everything meets the specifications of the engineering, because we have to make sure the field is safe and built correctly, will be a reduced rate for much of the gravel and stone that is needed to build the base of the field.
And if all the pledges come through, that would be another $200,000 of construction material?
Based on this, it would be approximately another $150,000 to $200,000, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Dooley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sean Dooley, 76 Cleveland Street. I just wanted to point out that one of the things that, you know, in going through this process and meeting with the turf committee people, you know, a lot of the work has been done. A traditional turf field to start new, from scratch, is a million to a million three. So we're talking under $600,000, you know, a $686,000 field, because a lot of the work was already done. When they built the school, they put in the track, they put it in correctly, they put the drainage on the outside, they did a lot of the prep work beforehand, so, and I also realize that some of the bids that have come in are based on some of the in-kind and it's local companies, some of the local companies bidding on this that want to do it for less money. So the overall price is come down considerably over just a, if we were starting off with just a blank field, because the track that we have in place and the, I think they're called D zones or D cups down at the end of each, are already in place, have already been put in place when they built the track, and so those all don't have to be touched. So all they really actually have to deal with is the actual grass turf area of the football field. And since the drainage is already built into the track, that takes out a huge expense, and also, it's from people that I've spoken to, that's a big mystery number, and that's where a lot of the numbers, once they start digging and they realize, oh, there's, you know, a certain amount of clay, or there's gravel, or, you know, whatever, that's where a lot of the other expenses really come up, whereas we don't have to worry about that on this particular situation.
Thank you, Mr. Dooley. Any further questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 17, the turf field, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes. Article 18. Don't everyone go, stay?
These are really interesting articles that are coming out. You're going to regret this.
We're listening, all right?
Come on, I can't guilt a few more people into sticking around? Here we go. Article number 18, Mr. Sterling.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 18 is printed in the warrant.
Seconded.
Mr. Sterling.
The current, this article allows the school committee a little bit more flexibility in putting together their budget. Currently, they do so very early in the season, lacking some information that helps them to make more precise estimates. We think it will facilitate, we think it will facilitate the budgeting process by giving the school committee more time to prepare their budgets.
So it's just a change in the schedule for the school committee to come up with their budget? Gives them a little bit more flexibility, consider the numbers, get it all done, get a more finished product. Any questions or comments or discussion? Mr. Rosenberg, you're warming up.
Yeah. I'm wondering whether Mr. Sterling or anyone else happens to know of the reason that the schedule was originally established to require a February budget, and if we knew of what that reason was, then we could see whether it still pertained or not.
I'm guessing it's as old as the regional agreement itself. Dr. Liz.
The regional agreement came into place in 1956 or 1958, and the three towns agreed on particular dates, and I believe it was actually out later at that point, was revised back in 78 or 76 or 78, and they changed the date. I think part of it is as town meeting has moved forward and budgets fluctuate and get a little bit clearer, we are first out of the gate, and by regional agreement, our budget is due to be finalized on February 14th. We don't even have the numbers in from the state at that point. So this would allow us an extra so many weeks to prepare the budget, get better, clearer numbers. The other issue is, the most important town in this process, of course, is Norfolk, because they're first out of the gate, which tells me is we have to back it up based on their timeframe. And we talked about this with all three towns, and this seemed to be a reasonable, reasonable date.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sneed.
Just to add one small point to that, Pat Sneed, 19 Frederickson Road. The budget that is received in mid-February is so early and so uncertain that basically we ignore it anyway. We know the real budget is coming later, so this really eliminates a lot of unnecessary make-work and will get us to the real budget sooner, rather than the delay that you might think it would cause.
Thank you, Mr. Sneed. Any further questions, comments, discussion on Article 18? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It passes unanimously. Article 19.
Mr. Moderator, I apologize in advance for all these words for such a little amount of money. I move that the town of Norfolk authorize the expenditure of a sum of $17,140 by the King Philip Regional District School Committee from the district's own funds, being whatever source, including its excess and deficiency fund, as being the town's share, constituting 34.28 percent, of the additional cost of a sewer improvement repair project, said additional cost being approximately $50,000, at the King Philip Regional Middle School within the King Philip Regional School District, of which the town of Norfolk is a member. Said amounts each to be expended at the direction of the King Philip Regional District School Committee.
Seconded.
Mr. Sterling.
Mr. Moderator, believe it or not, after all these words, this involves no additional spending by the town, these are funds already held by the school.
If people will remember, Dr. Liz talked about an excess and deficiency fund before, this is money that they have, no new taxes here, I believe. Any questions, comments, discussion on Article 19? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no?
No.
There's one no. Okay. Article 20. Mr. Stillman.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 20 is printed in the warrant.
Seconded.
Mr. Stillman.
This is a, basically a housekeeping article. We do it every year, it's, the money is used for the administration, and most of it isn't spent in the course of a year, but if it, they want to have the authorization to spend it if they need it.
Thank you. And just for further clarification, we have the Community Preservation Act here in town. We all pay a little bit of a surcharge, and we have to set aside a little bit for administrative costs and a little bit for different types of purchases, including open space, affordable housing, historical preservation, just in case, every year, and that's what this article is. Any, Mr. Rosenberg.
Am I correct in understanding that this is funds that have, are already in the Community Preservation Fund and are just being, permission is just being granted to expend them in a certain way?
It's based on the estimated receipts, I believe. Correct, Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments on Article 20? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It passes. Article 21. Mr. Stillman.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 21 is printed in the warrant.
Seconded.
Mr. Stillman.
This is, again, that Community Preservation Act, and what it does is it authorizes the spending monies in three categories, this is required, under Chapter 44B. It's open space, 10 percent, affordable housing, 10 percent, and the historic preservation.
As we just discussed, the required set-asides. Any questions, comments on Article 21? Sir?
I just wondered if, Mr. Moderator, if there's anyone here from the Community Preservation Committee who can tell us about recent projects?
Anyone here from the Community Preservation Committee that can talk about it? We voted on some. Ms. Andre.
Thanks for the question. The most visible recent project is what was formerly called Gump's Farm, and is now the Norfolk Community Park at Rockwood Road. The playground with the adjacent parking, et cetera, that will be further developed out into community garden and trails. We have given, over past years, over a million dollars to the Norfolk Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. You saw the fruits of their labors earlier. We've had historic projects in town, which are not as noticeable, but are nonetheless there. There are a number of new informative panels that have gone up around town, highlighting some of the history. There's one on Town Hill, there's one at City Mills, there's a couple, or there's one up right now at Highland Lake, and there's one at, there's one going up in Pondville, and I think I might be missing one. We have a project coming up later that's proposed in the cemetery. We've done projects in both cemeteries. I'm trying to think. That's probably more of the highlighted projects in the process.
Thank you. Further questions, comments? Article 21. Seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It passes. Article 22. Mr. Stillman.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 22 is printed in the warrant.
Seconded.
Mr. Stillman.
These funds, as you can see, those funds are there for the possibility of doing additional development or building, and they have those funds, we've voted this basically every year so that they can have these funds available. If something comes up during the year, they can, they can make it, turn it into affordable housing.
Thank you, Mr. Stillman. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 22, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article twenty-three.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article twenty-three as printed in the warrant.
Seconded.
Mr. Stillman.
This is a, uh, five thousand dollars. This would be used to, um, establish exactly where the boundaries are of the two cemetery, Norfolk cemeteries, which, uh, go back, uh, back into the sixteen hundreds. Uh, these are, uh, very historic. If, if you have a chance, get a, uh, go down at a Pondville or the Norfolk Cemetery and take a look. But what they're trying to do is just determine what's actually underground. Over the years, stones have been moved, lost. Uh, this is an opportunity for the town to actually find out if there's something there. They can, uh, make some adjustments.
Thank you, Mr. Stillman. Any questions? Mr. Gebfried.
Mr. Moderator, uh, Jim Gebfried, Thirty-four Robin Road, uh, through you to the town meeting. I have a question, and I don't know if it's because of the way the funding is, um, and how, for this particular device. If, by chance, uh, because of the capabilities of this radar for identifying, um, things that are below ground, here it specifies specifically to be used in the two cemeteries. If there was a need by the police department in a search and recovery to use this device, would they be allowed, uh, because these funds are specifically from the Preservation Act to purchase this?
I, I would say no. I don't know if anyone else has an opinion. I don't, I don't believe so. My guess also is that we're not buying equipment, but Ms. Andre, I believe we're just hiring a service to do this, Mr. Gebfried. And I got a nod back there from Ms. Andre. Any further questions on Article twenty-three? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It passes unanimously. Article twenty-four. Mr. Fruntak.
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article twenty-four.
Seconded.
Mr. Fruntak.
Uh, my understanding is the selectmen who originally submitted this have requested that it be withdrawn.
Thank you, Mr. Fruntak. Any questions? Comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of indefinitely postponing this matter signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It passes unanimously. Article twenty-five. Mr. Fruntak.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article twenty-five as printed in the warrant.
Seconded.
Mr. Fruntak.
This article deals with how capital spending gets, uh, gets proposed, and there are a variety of people involved in that process. Uh, Jack Hathaway, the selectmen, uh, the advisory board here, all of us pretty much agree we don't need a capital committee. I've been on that committee. A much more efficient method has been for Jack to simply propose capital projects as warrant articles as part of the budget process. Uh, we considered two such articles, eight and nine, earlier in the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fruntak. Any questions, comments, discussion on this article? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It passes unanimously. Article number twenty-six.
Good evening. Mr. Moderator, I, I move to, uh, I move that the town vote to discontinue the use of Common Core state standards and the associated testing known as PARC within the Norfolk Public Schools and the King Philip Regional School District and return to using the pre-two-thousand-nine Massachusetts standards in ELA math, science, technology, history, social science, and the, and the associated testing known as MCAS, uh, as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Tuohy. Is there a second? There is a, there is a second. Um, just before Mr. Tuohy gives a brief presentation on this, this is, so people know, this is a non-binding referendum. So this is not binding anyone to do anything it, uh, but it is stating a position that Mr. Tuohy has brought forward to this town meeting. Mr. Tuohy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, thank you, people of Norfolk. Uh, I make this, uh, non-binding warrant as I've, over the past two years, have come to get to know Common Core standards and PARC testing. And I, I, um, we did have the best standards up, up until we adopted these standards in two thousand nine, uh, two thousand ten, rather, and they were written in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, very hastily and very poorly implemented. Uh, they were, uh, as stated, uh, in, in the, um, handout provided by the, the school committee or, or Dr., uh, I'm not sure which one put it out, but stating that they were put out for public, uh, opinion in May of two thousand ten, and then signed on and adopted in July of two thousand ten. That gave two months of public opinion and comment, which I believe is a quite short time. Now, in nineteen ninety-three, when the, um, state went through its educational reform under, uh, Governor Bill Weld and Tom Birmingham, it was over three years of public input debate before the states were actually, uh, the standards were actually written and started to be implemented. Common Core standards right now, as stated by the proponents of Common Core, benchmarked. They have not been benchmarked. There was no documentation of them being benchmarked. The writers of Common Core standards, uh, we don't really know who they are, who recommended them, because the Common Core standards are private and copyrighted. They are not public, and they are not subject to a Freedom of Information Act. And I, I, I challenge anyone to challenge that, because I have proof of that. Also, the PARC, uh, the PARC assessment testing is also private and copyrighted and does not have any mechanism for update or input from the public or teachers for that matter. Teachers don't even see the questions before the, the tests are given. Also, right now, I, I, I read today that, uh, Dr. Carol Burris, uh, who's the superintendent of, I'm sorry, principal of a large high school in Long Island, New York, who is an award-winning teacher who was in full support of Common Core when it came out, as of today, she, she resigned her post as that because she's going to continue to fight the, uh, government mandates put out by Common Core standards. If we accept Common Core and PARC as it is now, we will surrender our local control over our schools. They'll be in the hands of private organizations such as ACHIEVE, National Governance Associations, and the Chief State School Officers Organization, which are not, they are private lobbying organizations. They're the ones who commissioned, uh, the state standards in the first place, and, uh, a lot of money came from the Gates Foundation. The studies that are cited in the handouts that are, yeah, given by the school committees today, those studies are funded mainly by the Gates Foundation via, uh, Fordham Institute, maybe some by the Excellence in Education, some by Mass Business Alliance, which, I thought you had a backdoor funding from Gates. Also, the Chamber in Commerce has recently be taken tons of money from the Gates Foundation to promote the Common Core standards, to say that they need more college and career-ready people out of, out of the high schools. I'm not, I, I, I've been reading a lot of studies that are not funded by any corporation. They're, they're done by colleges, they're done by educational experts. They're not funded by anybody, and they're traveling the country on their own dime, testifying in front of legislatures, giving forms throughout the, the country, throughout the country as well as in this state. We have many, we've had many in this past year, with Dr. Sandistowski, who is one of the architects, and one of the, um, architects of the Massachusetts frameworks in the late nineties and the early two thousands, who did work for Mass, uh, Mass Department of Education. Also, Dr. James Milgram, who is a mathematical expert, who is on the validation committee with Dr. Sandistowski, who, again, both of them refused to sign off on them, and they wrote and, written out of the, uh, the validation committee back in two thousand eight. I hope you will support this, send a message to our school committees and the state overall. The Common Core standards are not acceptable by, by us, the parents, and us, the taxpayers. So I hope you, um, feel the same way I do. Again, I've been putting over two years of research into this, reading books, reading studies, keeping up on it, and I find it very troubling that some of the schools are accepting this willingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tuohy. Any further comments or questions on Article twenty-six? Mr. Lutz.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I wonder if you can rule on the, uh, whether this is beyond the scope of what the, uh, town meeting can consider? My understanding is, is that we are fundamentally not able to pull out of this without significant penalties. It would not be unlike us putting on a non-binding question to not adopt the state building code. I'm not entirely sure this is a relevant question for town meeting. Um, I will say that I do fundamentally support the concept of returning to the MCAS standards, but I just don't know if this is worth our time.
Well, I, I can tell you that, uh, non-binding advisory recommendations have long been a feature of Massachusetts town meetings. As I indicated, it is not binding and doesn't authorize or direct anyone to take any specific action. As Mr. Tuohy said, it is, it is more in terms of supporting his advocacy efforts, but it's appropriate for town meeting to issue advisory. The town of Amherst banned nukes a number of years ago, so, hey, Amherst, so, anything is possible. But it is proper to consider, but it is important, and it's, uh, I thank you for bringing up and reminding the town meeting that it does have no binding effect on the school committee or this town government at all.
Mr. Moderator, if I could follow up. Fundamentally, the question is, uh, drafted incorrectly, then. We should be directing our elected state representatives to pursue changes to it, not to pull out of, of the Common Core program.
I, it, thank you for your comment. Sir.
Paul Dubois, Six Brookside Lane, and it's really just kind of a, a follow-up to that end piece. If we vote yes tonight, what do you do? What happens? What, what weight do we have as a town to get this changed, whether it be from our own school committee, whether it be from the state, whether it be federal? Help me understand what we do when we, when we vote yes tonight to, to, for this non-binding, yeah, article.
Mr. Tuohy, your thoughts on that?
Uh, if we do the vote yes, it sends a message to the state, such as other towns have done the same thing, Tewksbury, Whitman, Hanson, uh, Lublow, uh, Agawam, there's a few other towns that are missing. Plainville actually has it on their town meeting as well, uh, in June. Uh, so it, it sends a message to the, to the state. Right now, the, the state, Governor Weld has commissioned the Department of Education, the DESI, to, uh, have informational sessions. The first one was being a couple of weeks ago in Fitchburg. The second one will be in Bunker Hill College this coming Monday to debate, to get in, in input from teachers, taxpayers, and parents alike on their thoughts on Common Core and PARC. Now, I watched, I didn't, was, wasn't able to attend the Fitchburg one, but I did see the video of it, and it, and it was quite damning. There was a few teachers that were in half-support of it, some of them were no-support of it, and some of them were in total support of it. So there are various opinions going on right now. Um, but it's troubling me to me is there's a lot of good teachers leaving the profession right now over these, over these mandates that are coming in from the, uh, the Federal Department of Education that are being passed through our DESI.
Thank you, Mr. Tuohy. Mr. Dooley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sean Dooley, Seventy-six Cleveland Street. Um, to, to your further point, what, what this allows myself and other people as state representatives and our state senator to do is to speak as, with a little more authority, and so much that this will, and this is the will of the people. They are concerned about this. So it gives me, um, as someone that is, I'm opposed to the Common Core standards from different, from kind of a different angle. Um, so I would like to speak in behalf of this as, as a motion from the town to say that we are not happy with Common Core standards and with the PARC standards from the standpoint of, I believe in Massachusetts control. I do not like a federal standard. I don't like a federal one-size-fits-all. I don't want us to have the same, uh, requirements as Mississippi. I want us to be able to become, uh, remain on the leading edge. Massachusetts has long had the philosophy of leading on education. That has been the, uh, one of our, our greatest strengths. We have been number one in the nation for a number of years in a row, um, and in, and have outranked, um, I think we were number fifteenth or sixteenth, if you looked at us as an independent country, uh, number ninth on some studies. And so, what, by allowing us to move from Common Core, and, and this is what we're trying to do in the House and the Senate, is to really, really look at this. Um, and, and Governor Baker really wants to look at this, and it is, he has directed his Department of Education to look at this, about moving away from a federal mandated standard where a group in Washington, um, has control as to what our standard is, as opposed to having our parents, our teachers, our community leaders, our selectmen, um, everyone in Massachusetts continuing to revise our standards. And same with the MCAS testing. MCAS needs to be improved. MCAS is, you know, we, we need to advance it, but I want to have us advance it as opposed to a federal standard, so we can continue to have our children compete on an, not only a national scale, excuse me, but on an international scale. Our, our children are competing, whether it's for colleges or for jobs, against people from Singapore and Thailand and, and Sweden and other organ, other countries that have a much more dynamic and robust education system than we do. Um, there, there is, you know, I've, not necessarily against Common Core. If, if what our teachers and our administrators and, uh, the people with, you know, and, and the, and the families come together and put together a board and what they come up with is Common Core and PARC, then so be it. But I want to be able to have a control and be able to have it be fluid and be able to move to continually to advance it at Massachusetts pace and what's best for our children, not necessarily what's, uh, convenient on a nationwide, uh, nationwide standard. So for that reason, I would vote, to vote for this non-binding referendum. I did have one question for Mr. Moderator, a point of clarification. Is there, do you have the verbiage for this is a non-binding decision of the town of Norfolk, or is this a non-binding referendum? How is that attached? I would have, you know, liked to see that attached to that.
It's non-binding because it couldn't possibly bind anybody.
Well, obviously, we can't possibly, but, I mean, do, do we have any verbiage that would be put in the, the final?
I don't, I don't believe that that's required, uh, Mr. Dooley. It's just, it's not binding. It, it's not in a form that could bind anyone.
Right.
If anyone wanted to amend it to add that particular language, that's fine, but it is not in a form that could be binding.
Okay.
So I'm not concerned about that.
All right. Thank you.
Down at the mic.
My name is Barbara Byron. I live at eighty Fruit Street. I am a retired, uh, high school English teacher, um, and now I am still concerned about, uh, education and testing and the mass, um, standards as well as Common Core. Um, my main, um, objective as an English teacher was to make sure that my students could read critically, think critically, write competently. And, uh, so I'm wondering how a decision tonight can be made based on the fact that there are probably many in this room that have never read the mass, um, standards or have read the Common Core standards, or have looked at the PARC test, or who have looked at the MCAS test. And I know that there is a lot of misinformation that has been, um, proffered about the Common Core. First of all, it is not a federal mandate. It was something that was developed even before the race-to-the-top issue arose. The states got together, certain states got together because, uh, they felt that their, they either didn't have standards or their standards were not high enough. Massachusetts joined with those states because Massachusetts, in the course of the development of the Massachusetts standards, oh, periodically over the years would, um, make changes to improve the standards and also make changes to improve the MCAS test. And the other states were very happy to have Massachusetts join because they knew that the educational systems in Massachusetts did very, very well, and our standards were high-quality. And as a result, the Massachusetts standards were integrated into the Common Core. The, um, various, uh, issues about curriculum, for example, uh, the Common Core, neither MCAS, uh, the Massachusetts standards nor, um, the Common Core dictates curriculum in a, a school system. A school system comes up with its curriculum and then applies it to, uh, the standards of the state. Uh, when Massachusetts took on the Common Core, they were allowed to add fifteen percent more, uh, standards, uh, to, to the Common Core that were specifically aimed at the state of Massachusetts. Another issue that arises is, uh, that teachers, that it's telling teachers how to teach. Uh, this is not true. Now, when I was, I, I taught sophomore English at Denham High School, and I wrote curriculum for grades, uh, ten, uh, levels, honors, and one. And what we did, we looked at the standards, uh, then we looked at the curriculum that had been approved by the English department and this, and the school, and, uh, looked at Oedipus, Antigone, nineteen eighty-four, um, the Merchant of Venice, and applied Antigone, 1984, The Merchant of Venice, and applied the standards to that. What would teachers do in order to teach that? It's a complex thing that many, when, at least when I was involved in building the standards in the state of Massachusetts, and this is back in the late 90s, I attended meetings and had many English teachers that were there, as well as college professors, business people, people who taught special needs, and that was how it was built. When the Common Core was worked on, yes, they did involve English teachers for the English Language Arts program. So, it just seems to me it's a pretty complex system, building standards, applying standards, and deciding here based on certain kinds of information that doesn't really work too well is, is not helpful. And I just wanted to read, I pulled out, I went on and got the standards for the Common Core.
Is this, the reading going to be fairly brief?
I'm just going to read two things.
Okay.
One from, one from the Common Core for reading, grades nine and 10, which is what I'm most familiar with. It says, "Cite strong and thorough textual evidence to support an analysis of what the text says explicitly, as well as inferences drawn from the text." The Massachusetts reading, this is from 2009, is approximately, is the same wording. And you can go through and find that the Common Core utilized much of what the standards for Massachusetts presented. And, and so, I, my sense is you all should go to your computer and pull out the standards and pull out the Common Core, make a comparison, and then make a judgment, because that's what critical reading and thinking is all about. I rest my case.
Thank you. Ms. Robison.
Wendy Wagner Robison, 2 Montauk Avenue. I am in favor of the Common Core. I hope that this town agrees with me. I've studied this way my entire life, so it's not just two years, my whole life. I have looked at the Common Core standards. I've read the hundreds and hundreds of pages of them, critically reading them, critically thinking about them. This is the next step for our state to go along with the curriculum frameworks that our state developed in the 90s. We had the MCAS, now we have the Park. We don't know the results of the Park, so let's look at the results, let's analyze the data, and we'll decide whether it's something we want to do or not. Also, remember, our school districts get money from the state. Chapter 70 money would be gone if we did not, if the state decides to go with Park and to go with the Common Core. We wouldn't get that money. Where would we be with our schools? Would our schools even exist? I think not. So, I would vote no for this article. Go, Google it. You can read every single page of it, and you'll see what I saw. Thank you.
Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you. I've read the handouts having to do with the legal position on our requirements for following this, so I'm not interested in more information about our legal obligations, but I am interested in hearing from both the Norfolk School District and the King Philip Regional District about their opinions of the value appropriateness, helpfulness, and utility of the Common Core and Park standards.
If either of you want to...
In terms of the Common Core standards, I think one of, sure, sorry. I think the, one of the important things to note is that any set of standards is always intended to be the bare minimum competencies that every child should know and learn across grade levels. In Norfolk, as far as across the state, the standards have never been intended as the ceiling. They are the floor, bare minimum competencies. We believe in rigorous educational programming. We, as, I'm not sure, I missed your name that spoke earlier, but the standards don't define the curriculum. They don't define how we teach the material. So, I think that that's an important piece, too. We feel at the, at the elementary level, the Common Core standards are very appropriate. I think they're very challenging in ways, they're stronger than the mass state frameworks were in terms of nonfiction writing, critical reading. So, there's, there's growth there. They were heavily influenced by the mass state standards, which sort of led the way. As far as the Park testing, I think the Park testing is a separate issue from the Common Core. We have known for several years now that the current math, the current MCAS tests are insufficient in several ways. The biggest issue we have with the state testing currently is that students take the MCAS in March. It takes the state almost six months to get those scores back to us. So, by the time we get the results from the MCAS, they usually come in late August. The students are in the next grade level with a new teacher and new standards to cover. So, are the usability of the data to help us drive instruction and to help us improve performance with kids, it's really way too late. The other issue with the MCAS is that because they are developed internally, and they don't release any longer all the items because of the validation process. So, when students take a test, the state now only releases about half of the test items. So, you get a student's score report, and we'll know that they missed question five, six, seven, we know what standard it was, but you can't actually look at what the question was to determine where the student went wrong. So, for purposes of driving instruction, there are some issues with the MCAS. I don't think anybody across the state is convinced that Park is the right response to that. It's being tried out. The governor has established open forums for, to collect feedback from educators who participated in giving the Park, from students, from parents, so there's a formal process that, that creates a lot of public input to really look at that. Until we get the data and we look at what information that gives us about students, is it more helpful? Is it more informative? I really can't weigh in on whether Park's the right solution. We know we need something different. We're trying out the Park right now. I think there's a lot of avenues to collect information, and I think we'll be able to make an informed choice, and our district intends to participate actively in that process in shaping the decision the Board of Ed makes in October. Okay?
Dr. Lewis, if you have anything to add.
I will concur with my colleague. I will just add one small piece regarding MCAS and Park, a little bit of a difference. The MCAS is a paper and pencil test, and the Park test can be done as an online or computerized test. As you look at students that are entering college, 90% of colleges, all mathematics, for example, is now done online. All students take assessments online in college for mathematics. It is essential that we prepare our students with tests that are computerized so that they are ready as they move into higher education. MCAS is 20 years old. It reaches a standard. Park, again, is being tried out. We opted in King Philip to try out the Park for the middle school students because if and when the Board of Education decides if that is going to be the test that's going to be used, our students have the experience of doing that. But either way, whether they decide to keep MCAS test or tweak it, or they go with Park or some other assessment against the standards in the Common Core, it will have to be an online test. That's really the only way. It's getting way too expensive for them to continue to paper and pencil, and the technology has moved forward in that realm. Reverting back would not be a positive step.
Thank you. I sent, we're probably getting pretty close to being able to vote. If you have anything new?
Very quickly.
Very quickly.
So, as a parent of a King Philip Middle School student, I have a son who is a B minus to a B plus and an occasional A minus student, who on Sunday night said to me, "I can't wait to go to school tomorrow because I'm taking the Park test." I said, "Why?" He said, "'Cause it's so easy." If we want the standards for our children to be a B minus to a B plus student to come in and take standardized testing to be easy, we are not setting the bar high enough.
Ms. Moy.
Hi, my name is Tracy Malloy. I live at 4 Strawberry Lane. I am not an expert on this topic, but I've spent a lot of time researching this, and I will start by saying I'm not a big fan of standardized testing at all. MCAS needs some updating, and we need to work on it. Park is something that is a national agenda. If we move to Common Core and Park, we are taking meetings like this out of our hands. They will no longer be part of our decisions. These decisions will come down from Washington, and our teachers will lose their ability to teach. They, every student across the country will learn the same thing. People will tell you that it's just a standard, we're only, you know, that's not the only thing that your children will learn. I think it's a 15% difference that we're allowed to make to the curriculum. That's not very large. I also have a middle school student. I also have an elementary school student, and the teachers are teaching to the test. My children spend hours and days learning how to take MCAS and Park. And for anybody that tells you that, any parent who has a child in the school system will tell you that that's exactly what happens. And in the direction that we're headed, we are taking complete and total control away from the teachers that we love. And to think that a meeting like this isn't going to happen in a few years if we head towards Park is, is very concerning to me. I want to be part of my children's education. I think a lot of parents want to be. I want, I want my teachers to teach. I don't want them to be robotic and teach to the test that's coming. And I believe there was an eighth grade mom said to me that her son is going to spend 12 days taking standardized testing this year. And I can't even imagine the amount of hours that are also going to be spent preparing for the standardized testing. And lots of other things have been dropped, and more parents can tell you what's been dropped. This is something that we can't rush into. We just can't. Nothing's perfect, but by not looking and discuss, looking at this and discussing it and learning more about it, we're just giving up. We're just handing it over. And I just have such a problem with that. This is such an important issue. And the fact that people came here tonight and voted for a turf field and then ran out is horrifying to me, that they didn't stay here to talk about this. That's where I am. I'm obviously pretty passionate about this. All I want is for us to slow down and people to get the facts on what in the world is going on. Because if we keep going down this path, we're not turning back. If it becomes a federal thing, what kind of federal initiative ever gets turned around? What, what kind of changes happened in Washington, D.C.? Can we make any changes there? Can we change Social Security? Can we change anything? No. And that's where we're going. So, this is our time to try to continue to, to learn about this and then make a decision. Thank you.
Really? Briefly, Ms. Sainaba.
Brief.
I think we're just about ready to vote.
Patricia Sainaban, 6 Shady Way. I happen to have a master's in American history. This goes back to states' rights. That's it. States' rights. Don't give it up. Let Representative Dooley go and work with Governor Baker to help this situation. States' rights. Madison, Jefferson, Jackson fought for that. States' rights. Thank you.
Okay. I think we're ready to take a vote on this. Yes. All right. So, all those in favor of the non-binding referendum presented by Mr. Toohey, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I think the ayes have it. I will count it if there's seven people, but I think the ayes have it. And the ayes have it.
Woo-hoo!
Article number 27, I believe, Mr. Robbins? Do we have a petitioner here for Article 27? Yes, sir.
I am the petitioner behind this article, and...
I need a motion.
Motion to what? Approve it?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. I motion to approve this article.
Motion to approve, how about this? How about a motion to approve the zoning amendment presented in the article? How about that?
How about that?
All right. So, so moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Robbins, do you want to speak to this?
Well, the article as it reads, I don't know if it explains it properly. Basically, what I want to see be done to the town is that in areas where there is land that can be developed for up to two lots, that we don't make people put in roads that will be accepted by the town and approved by the town. Public roads, with all the public services. You know, leave it up to them what they actually want to put in there, or the DPW and the planning board. But, you know, when I hear we don't have enough money to take care of all these roads, and I hear the planning boards basically saying, "We did not set the precedence yet for private roads or shared driveways or common driveways," yet in the past they did. There are private roads in this town. There are common driveways. There are roads that the town does not have to maintain. And when I look at some of the roads that people were made to put in for one house, it's ridiculous. So, basically, you know, I see the, the planning board had a meeting on this, which I knew nothing about, and I wasn't even allowed, you know, invited to discuss this. Whose fault that was, I don't know, but some guy come walking out of the town hall one day and said, "Where were you last night?" I said, "Where was, what do you mean?" But they had a planning board meeting about your article. I said, "Nobody told me about it." So, that was one thing. I was invited to go and discuss this with the advisory board, which I did, and I felt things went pretty well, but now I read their answer basically saying that I didn't follow the typical process that occurs with proposed changes to the zoning bylaws. Well, nobody explained to me what the process is. I basically wrote an article with help, and basically what I'm asking the town to do is let driveways or shared driveways or private roads be developed where a road could have been, so the town doesn't have to maintain them in the future. Now, if you go through a lot of these subdivisions in this town now that were put in back in the 70s and 80s, they need roads desperately, and we don't have the money to do those roads. So, I'm saying let the homeowners take care of it, plus pay their taxes.
Thank you. Planning board, I see a recommendation from the planning board. Is anyone here from the planning board that is able to speak to this article? Mr. Byron?
The planning board supports the advisory board's recommendation and recommends that we definitely postpone the article. Now, the article deserves a discussion and deserves consideration, but probably not on town floor. As the advisory board said, there is a process for doing that, and we recommend that we follow that process. Thank you.
Any further comments, questions? Anyone from the advisory committee wish to be heard? I see that you have a recommendation. No, that that pretty much covers. Anybody else? Seeing none. All those in favor, this does require a two-thirds vote in that it is a zoning amendment. All those in favor of the bylaw amendment proposed under Article 27, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I declare that is not even a majority vote and certainly not a two-thirds vote. I will count it if there are seven people that want me to. Seeing none. Article 28. Mr. Fruntzak.
Okay, the last article. Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 28 as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Mr. Fruntzak.
Okay, so renewable energy, a good thing. Okay, so renewable energy, a good thing. Today, people can install like solar panels on the roofs of their homes, which is great. Other examples would be ground-mounted solar generation equipment and/or wind power as well. However, Bob Bullock, our building inspector, brought to the advisory board's attention, there are some cases where people who own property in a residential zone have expressed interest in putting in renewable energy equipment where there's no house. So we had a discussion about this in the advisory board. We were trying to weigh sort of our sense of what people should be able to do with their own property. Others included sort of really expressed concern that the idea of not having a house and then putting in power generation equipment kind of stretched the idea of a residential zone, if there's no residents there at all. I believe Bob probably wants to speak to this some more, and others in the advisory board may come up to them and talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning board. How about you first? You're required.
The planning board supports this article and recommends that it be approved, much as the logic is described by the advisory committee. We feel that it's inappropriate to create a solar display on a whole lot in the middle of a residential area. Those of you who would like to see what a large solar display is, you can go down to the former landfill and take a look. And it's, obviously, it's bigger than perhaps one particular lot in a residential area, but nevertheless, it gives you an idea of what it'll look like. If you own a house and would like to put solar panels in, this article will allow that adjacent to your home. But we don't think it's appropriate to put them on the whole lot without a house there. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Mr. Rosenberg.
I'm interested in understanding the rationale for not permitting solar panels on a lot without a house. Is it merely aesthetics, or is there some other reason as why not allow it?
Mr. Stillman, are you rising to talk?
A good example is the solar panel farm at the landfill. It's surrounded by chain link fence. It develops voltage, hazardous voltage. I don't think that's something that's appropriate in a residential neighborhood. So it's not just aesthetic. It has a safety issue and a hazard issue as well.
I will point out to town meeting that there are vast zoning exemptions for solar generation facilities, and that this is merely an effort to try and confine them into certain types. But solar farms do enjoy pretty vast exemptions with or without bylaws. So this is an effort, I believe, to try and focus them in certain ways. Mr. Fruntzak.
One thing I would add is that my understanding is if through some unique circumstance a citizen really wanted to put a solar installation, let's say, a lot with no house, a proposal could be made here at town meeting to then add that particular residence to the solar zoning overlay. I'm not sure I'm getting the language exactly right, but there is still, based on my understanding, a provision for someone to do this if there were really unique special circumstances that made sense. They could come here and explain that. Thank you.
Anything further? Seeing nothing further on this article, our last article. It requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes, I declare, by a two-thirds vote.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Dissolve town meeting.
There is a motion to dissolve town meeting.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.[1732.83]